Good evening, we are ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded and can be viewed live on City of Las Vegas TV on Cox Cable Channel 2. You can also watch the meeting live online and access other city content by visiting LasVegasNevada.gov/Connect. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on City of Las Vegas TV the Saturday after the meeting at 10:00 a.m., Monday at midnight, and the following Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unyielding, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Taylor.
Present.
Vice Chair Kassama.
Present.
Commissioner Schlotman.
Present.
Commissioner Rogan.
Present.
Commissioner Walsh. Excuse Commissioner DeSalvio.
Present.
Commissioner Mumford.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Let's move to number four, public comment. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made under this item for a specific action item will be cross-referenced to those items. And before we open it up for public hearing, just want to note that we do have a couple of items that might run long, so we want to keep everybody to two minutes, please. And if you plan on speaking on any item that is public comment, please, please come down when the item is called so we can see who all wants to speak for public comment. If we don't see you at the podium, we may assume there are not members of the public wishing to speak on an item. So, I do, I do see a member of the public. Any other members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda?
My name is Robert Kingston, almost 30-year owner resident adjacent property at 7100 Jeanette Street, and I am not opposed to development with item 21, Development 25-0027 at the northeast corner of Donald Leon, but I am opposed to the unrealistic and higher-density lots as proposed on the March, April, and May 2025 Planning Commission Agenda. I sent protest letters to City of Las Vegas on March 11th and May 5th. I appeared at the April 8th Planning Commission meeting and commented during the public portion agenda about my comments were not included in the minutes. All I've received to date from the city was a helpful email from Holden Wiseman, a planner from the city yesterday, which I went back and forth regarding my opposition to prose development and issues over receiving no prior notifications development from anyone other than the posted signage and conversations with my neighbors. I sent an email and fax to the developers engineer, Tany Engineering, on May 8th, and I never received a response, but I did receive a voicemail late afternoon today. Most every year, a lot in our entire neighborhood bordered by Elkhorn, Leon, Jeanette, and Deer Springs that I believe is a half-mile long and an eighth-of-a-mile wide are half-acre nominal size minimum as shown on the city's GIS maps in the master plan. This is equivalent to four homes on two acres, which is ideal to match most of the neighborhood with this subject development. Roadway construction in the neighborhood is substandard with lower-capacity narrow right-of-way roads that were part of the county's PM10 dust abatement that is ignored in the city's staff report. This results in more rapid wear, leading to poor road conditions sooner and greater expenses to the city to maintain the future. Additionally, none of the prior higher-density housing developments west of Donald, east of Jeanette, between Elkhorn and Deer Springs have emergency access to the neighborhood, and I and in between Elkhorn and Deer Springs have non-emergency access to the neighborhood, and I believe that was agreed upon as part of their zoning changes to preserve our residential estates. That way also waived curb, gutter, sidewalk, and streetlights so we can enjoy the night sky. These restrictions were put in place to avoid access to our neighborhood streets, keep our streets quieter with less traffic, and much safer for our children to play on their bikes and our residents to ride their horses and walk their dogs. It appears to me that prior concessions to other developments so that they could change to R1 zoning are not connected to our neighborhood streets is being used against the neighborhood to allow R1 zoning change to develop that does connect to our neighborhood streets. The only apparent exception to this is development immediately north of the subject property, which is gated and has 13 lots on four acres as shown in the packet. I don't know if you can see what I have here on this display or not.
Cannot, but you have, Mr. Kingston, you only have a few more seconds, and this is item 21. So if you want to hold a few more comments until item 21, I'll give you a little more time then.
Okay, very good.
Is that, okay.
I'll wait.
Great, thank you, sir.
Item 21, should I wait as well?
You can wait until item 21 is called if you would like to, yes.
My name is Ramon Anthony Perez. For the record, that's spelled R.A.M.O.N.A.N.T.H.O.N.Y.P.E.R.E.Z. I live on Evergreen Avenue near the Decatur Boulevard Cross Street and about a 15-second walk from the Arizona Charlie's parking lot on Evergreen, and I'm here today to express my opposition regarding the proposed development by Foregreen Development. While I understand the need for growth within the city of Las Vegas, I have serious concerns that this development has brought up. My first concern is in reference to 24-0486 VAR1, which is the request for the reduction from 475 parking spots to 461, which would cause an overflow parking into the nearby neighborhoods such as Evergreen Avenue, which is my local street. And as someone who lives on this street, I can say for sure that all of my neighbors are using up the parking in front of our houses, so there would be no room for overflow on our street. And of course, Decatur Boulevard is a main street, so there would be no parking there Another concern I have is the increased traffic that this development would cause. A large residential development would increase the local traffic. Evergreen Indicator is already a busy intersection due to the Arizona Charlie's Casino, and this would be especially dangerous due to all the pedestrians crossing to and from the casino. The next concern I have is in reference to 24-0486 SDR1. This developer is asking to skip or reduce the landscape barrier or buffer around the property, which this buffer would provide noise reduction, create visual barriers, and improve the aesthetic of the area. And creating a waiver for this would mean both future and current residents feeling cramped up with one another and having more disturbances from noise and traffic. My closing thoughts are if the developer already needs to submit waiver requests to reduce parking spaces, waive building orientation standards, and cut landscape buffers all before construction has even started, then I firmly believe that this is indicative that the project 24-0486 SDR1 is a poor fit for the community. And as a resident of Evergreen Avenue, who would be directly affected by these proposed shortcuts, I can see this leading to long-term problems for nearby residents in addition to myself. That's why I ask the commission to protect the livability of our neighborhood and to not allow 24-0486 VAR1, SDR1, or Zone 1 for moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to be heard in public comment for this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close this item, and we'll move on to item four. This is to approve the final minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of April 8th, Interim Vice Chair Schlotman, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you. I move to approve the Plan and Commissionments.
Thank you. No motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Commissioner Rogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Kassama.
Aye.
Thank you, that motion does carry. Please post. All right, let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Madam Chair, Nicole Eddos for the record. The applicant is requesting to hold item number 23 to the June 10th Planning Commission meeting. Staff is requesting to hold item number 26 to the July 8th Planning Commission meeting for the applicant to continue to work with staff on a new location. And staff is requesting to strike item number 21B 25-0027-VAR1 as the application is no longer necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on any of the items that were just identified in our housekeeping? Okay, hearing none. Vice Chair Schlotman, would you like to make a motion on these housekeeping items?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you. On item 21B, I move to strike that item. 23, I move to hold that item in abeyance till the June 10th Planning Commission hearing. And on item number 26, move to hold that one item in abeyance until the July 8th PC hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, there is a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. Commissioner Rogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Kassama.
Aye.
Please post.
And Samantha D. Nicola, City Clerk. For clarification, that's 23A through E.
Thank you for that clarification. And with that, the motion carries on item six. Item seven, our consent items. These are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any items may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. Item number seven, oh. Is there a motion on items seven and eight for our consent items?
Yes, Madam Chair, on item number seven and eight, move to approve. Subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you, there's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Commissioner Rogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Kassama.
Aye.
Please post, and that motion carries.
Madam Chair, those items, items seven and eight will be final action unless appealed to the clerk in seven days.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our one-motion-one-vote items. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public and public hearing items with a staff recommendation of approval. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Number nine, 25-0093 SUP1, applicant Chaya Ty Bistro, owner Sam Adal et al., for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for proposed 2,269 square-foot Supper Club alcohol on-premise full use with a waiver to allow a 231-foot distance separation from a city park where 400 feet is required at 3,390 Novot Street, Suite 120, Ward 4, Alan Polinsky. Staff recommends approval. Item 10, 25-0100 SDR1, applicant-owner Integral Partners Park Place Center, Las Vegas LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a major amendment to an approved site development plan review, SDR 75854, for a proposed pedestrian walkway addition with a waiver of perimeter landscape buffer and mechanical screening requirements at 3215 South Rancho Drive, Ward 3 Diaz. Staff recommends approval. Item 11, 25-0104 MOD1, applicant-owner The Howard Hughes Company LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request to amend the Summerland Development Standards regarding perimeter fences and walls, courtyard walls, and refuse storage and disposal. Ward 2 Seaman, Ward 4 Alan Polinsky, and Ward 1 Knutson. Staff recommends approval. Item 12, applicant, oh, sorry, 25-0105 SUP1, applicant Vegas Brothers LLC, owner 1201 Stewart LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for proposed 3,000-square-foot alcohol on-premise full use at 1201 Stewart Avenue, Suites Number 1 through 4, Ward 3 Diaz. Staff recommends approval. Item 13, 25-0115 SUP, applicant Inga Davidian Brunello LLC, owner Five Hills LP, for possible action on land use entitlement project request for a proposed 1,986-square-foot pubs, bars, lounges, alcohol on-premise full use with a 376-square-foot outdoor patio area at 9,320 Sun City Boulevard, Suite Number 101, Ward 4, Alan Polinsky. Staff recommends approval. Related items 14, 14A and 14B, 25-0116, applicant-owner The Howard Hughes Company LLC, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests at the southwest corner of Lakeme Boulevard in Clark County 215, Ward 2 Seaman. Staff recommends approval on the land use entitlement project. 14A, 25-0116 MOD1 for the proposed modification of the parcel configuration on the approved development plan, MDR 73901, for Summerland Village 22. 14B, 25-0116 TMP1, Summerland Village 22 Phase 2 for a 17-lot parent subdivision on 196.33 acres at the northeast corner of Sunset Run Drive and Kettle Ridge Street, APNs 137-14-411-007, 137-23-211-008, 010, and 012. Item number 15, 25-0127 VAR1, applicant-owner The Exemption Trust of the 1-2KP Family Trust for possible action on a land use entitlement project request to allow a 15-foot rear yard setback where 20 feet is required for a proposed single-family residence at 3133 Beachview Court, Ward 2 Seaman. Staff recommends approval. Item 16, 25-0142 SUP1, applicant Francisco Hernandez, owner Nine Island LLC, for action on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed 2,700-square-foot alcohol on-premise full use at 150 North Las Vegas Boulevard, Suite Number 160, Ward 3 Diaz. Staff recommends approval. And item 17, 25-0150 SUP, applicant The Peyote Room LLC, owner Blue Dream LV LLC, for possible use, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed 2,665-square-foot banquet facility use at 2,050 Pinto Lane, Suite Number 300, Ward 1 Knutson. Staff recommends approval. Are there any items from the one-motion-one-vote list that anybody wishes to have pulled forward? Okay, seeing none, then may I get a motion, please, on one motion, one vote?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you. I move to approve on the one motion, one vote, which is items nine through 17, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you, there's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. Commissioner Rogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Kassama.
Aye.
Please post.
Chair, just for the record, can you open the, those items for public comment?
Oh, thank you, yes, I can. Okay, we'll just hold posting the vote for a second. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on any of these items? Seeing none, we will close public comment on our one motion, one vote, one motion, one vote items. Okay, and that motion has passed.
Madam Chair, items nine, 10, 12, 13, 15, 16 are final action unless appealed to the clerk in 10 days. Items 11, 14, 17 are moving forward to the June 18th, 2025 City Council meeting.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to our public hearing items. We're going to go a little bit out of order. I am going to pull forward item number 34, which is 25-0131 SUP1, applicant-owner City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed rescue mission or shelter for the homeless use at 1450 North Main Street, Ward 5 Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends approval. May I please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, staff finds the proposed land use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the existing surrounding land uses, and staff recommends approval of the requested special use permit. And we have additional staff here tonight to answer any additional questions the commission may have. Please note additional documents of protest were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, if you could please both state and spell your name for the records and let us know about the project.
Yes, good evening, my name is Arcelia Barajas. The Director of Neighborhood Services, A-R-C-E-L-I-A-B-A-R-A-J-A-S.
Rosa Cortez, City of Las Vegas, Deputy Director of Public Works.
So my department oversees the city's Recreative Care Center. It is a respite facility for individuals who are homeless and discharged from the hospital and are still requiring a place to recuperate or finish their healing journey. We provide services off of Main Street currently. This request is for a special use so that we can temporarily relocate these services to the second floor of our Health and Wellness Center. The existing Recreative Care Center will undergo demolition and reconstruction and will have a new facility, but in the meantime, we would like to be able to maintain and keep current services going. The second floor of the Health and Wellness Center is also owned by the city. We are proposing to have 17 beds on the second floor, so the services will be reduced, but they will be able to be maintained. Parking will be available at our Courtyard Homeless Resource Center parking area as well as across the street through Health USA, our partners. I'm going to hand it over to Rosa if you guys have any questions regarding the layout and stuff.
Yeah, so the project that we have currently in design is the rebuild of the Recreative Care Center that Arcelia mentioned, which is on the west side of Main Street. That project will start demolition this summer, and it is scheduled to be built within 18 months, so that's about the same timeline that we need this temporary use over at the Health and Wellness Center.
Thank you very much. This matter was noticed for public hearings, so if there are any members of the public wishing to speak on item 34, please come down to the podium. And folks, if you're going to speak on an item, please be sure to move down as the item is being presented.
Thank you, Madam. Chairman Catherine Duncan for the record, and I just don't know enough about this project. Can I ask what the cost is, what they're proposing, and who's going to foot the bill?
Sure. So there are already funds set aside for the administration and operations of our Recreative Care Center, so those funds will transfer into the new facility. We will have some facility expenses regarding some tenant improvements and maybe moving some of our existing furniture and supplies to the second floor, but they're very minimal, and they will be funded out of a grant that the department oversees.
Great, thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close this matter for public hearing. Anything else, ladies, you'd like to tell us about the project? Okay, with that, I will turn it back to the commission, starting with Commissioner Mumford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It seems I went, I sat with the Planning Department, and they went through and told me, basically, it's, you know, you're going to be providing a better facility for the people who need that service down there, so I think, I think it's going to be a good project for, you know, for the ward and what you're doing, so I'm going to motion for approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Mumford, anybody else on the commission have any comments or on the phone or questions? Okay, hearing none, I will turn it back to Commissioner Mumford for his motion.
I would like to make a motion for approval, subject to our conditions.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Commissioner Rogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Kassama.
Aye.
Okay, great, please post, and that motion carries.
Madam Chair, that'll be moved forward to the June 18th, 2025 City Council meeting.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, item number 18, abeyance, renotification 24-0486, applicant Foregreen Development LLC et al., owner Arizona Charlie's LLC, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests at the southwest corner of Evergreen Avenue and Decatur Boulevard, Ward 1 Knutson. Staff recommends approval on 24-0486-ZON1. Staff recommends denial on 24-0486 VAR1, SUP1, and SDR1. And those sub-items are as follows, 18A, abeyance, 24-0486-ZON1 from C1 Limited Commercial to C2 General Commercial, APNs 13836-802-002, and 138-36712-023. 18B, abeyance, renotification 24-0486 VAR1 to allow 461 parking spaces where 475 spaces are required. 18C, abeyance, 24-0486 SUP1 for a proposed mixed-use development. And 18D, abeyance, renotification 24-0486 SDR1 for a proposed three-story mixed-use development consisting of 293 residential units and 8,429 square feet of commercial area with waivers of building orientation standards and the perimeter landscape buffer requirements. May we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, this is Christian Gates, Planner 2, Community Development for the record. Regarding the proposed rezoning request, the C2 zoning district is consistent with the site's existing TOD Transit Oriented Development High Land Use designation of the general plan, which will allow the redevelopment of the subject site. Therefore, staff recommends approval of rezoning the subject site. However, the overall development plan is located within a transit-oriented land use corridor as it is a large, underutilized parcel able to foster redevelopment that would support mass transit by activating the pedestrian realm. While the applicant has made a notable attempt to bring the mixed-use development building frontage closer to Decatur Boulevard, staff finds the proposed mixed-use development provides an autocentric design by placing a row of parking adjacent to Decatur Boulevard, where the building frontage that contains the first-floor retail should front Decatur Boulevard to activate the pedestrian realm. Parking lot should be located to the rear structures within a transit-oriented corridor. Additionally, staff finds the requested parking reduction variance and reduction in perimeter landscape buffer woods to be a self-imposed hardship. Due to the proposed design of the development not supporting the goals of the transit-oriented corridor or the objectives of the 2050 master plan, staff is recommending denial of the variance, special use permit, and site development plan review. Please note additional letters of support have been submitted after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, if you could please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address, and tell us about the project.
Good evening, Liz Olson, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant for development. First and foremost, thank you to the board and for staff for allowing us to hold this for a month and work with Mr. Solis and Public Works on some revisions that we think will address some of the concerns, so thank you for that additional time. This site is, as you know, an infill piece of property. We're just over eight acres, located along Evergreen and Decatur. Directly to the north of us is the Arizona Charlie's site. To the south and to the west of us is some multifamily development, and across Decatur you have some single-family residential. The site is currently split-zone- Decatur, you have some single-family residential. The site is currently split zoned with C2, the majority of the site along the Decatur frontage, with C1 at the rear. We are requesting a conforming zone change to C2 to allow for the site to be consistent across the property and to allow for the mixed-use development. If you aren't familiar with Four Development, they are a high-end residential multifamily developer. They have developed several mixed-use developments throughout Southern Nevada. They built a beautiful product. We think this would also be a great site for another mixed-use development. It's a true mixed-use development with vertical retail built directly into the multifamily building. So as you can see on the site here, we are providing access off of Decatur as well as Evergreen here. We are providing two separate buildings here and here. The retail would be located on the first two levels of the multifamily building fronting on to Decatur. So none of that retail will be close to the existing multifamily over here or over here. Just to the south of us is some additional commercial here. So we've lined that up with the existing commercial to the north and to the south of us. The main change that we made to our plans was the orientation of the building along Decatur because of this corridor here. So our original site plan actually had four rows of parking in front of this building. So what we've done is shifted it as close as we possibly could to Decatur while still providing a little bit of parking in the front just for those folks that are going to actually drive to the development and need some parking in the front of the retail. And then we've relocated the additional parking that we moved to the center of the site here. The building will be three stories, maximum of 40 feet high, as you can see here in our elevation exhibit. Couple points that the neighbor made during public comment earlier that I'd just like to address as it relates to our waivers and to our variance. So our parking variance is a reduction of 14 spaces, which is pretty insignificant. The project before you is one- and two-bedroom only, so you're not going to have a lot of three-bedroom big families with a lot of cars. Typically, we see a lot of extra parking in their developments, so we believe the 14-space shortage will not push any of those cars out on to Evergreen, and they will be kept on site. As for our landscaping along Evergreen and Decatur, we are requesting a waiver along Decatur to reduce the width a little bit. That is because we have to place the D cell lane here. Along Evergreen here, one of the comments from the neighbor, which is, it was a great comment, is that we aren't providing the correct number of trees along Evergreen. I think we'd be happy to discuss that, if that's something the board would like to see along Evergreen. We are short just a few trees, but I think that's something that we could probably discuss tonight if you would like to see that. As for overall traffic, the site is currently zoned for commercial. If this piece of property were to develop out as commercial, you would see probably three times the amount of traffic on an eight-acre piece of property. So we have about 8,400 square feet of retail incorporated into the 243-unit multifamily development. That is going to be significantly less traffic in and out on a daily basis. Additionally, if this were to develop out as commercial, you would likely see quite a few 24-hour uses, which would bring more traffic all day and all night. So we think this is a much better project for the overall area, considering that there is some residential in the area. We appreciate, again, staff's time working with us on this, and I will turn it over to you and the neighbors for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Olson. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Other than the gentleman who spoke during our opening public hearing, is there anyone else from the public that would like to be heard? And again, folks, if you know you're going to be speaking on an item, please come down when the item is being presented. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Philip Flaherty, F-L-A-H-E-R-T-Y, on behalf of Charleston Heights Shopping Center. We're the neighbor north of Arizona Charlie's. One of the things the young lady did not comment on was whether the existing parking that is used by Arizona Charlie's in that area, where that's going to go. We already know. They're already, quite honestly, in our neighbor, on our property already. We have suffered trespass speeds and even burning cars. So we're not exactly thrilled about an expansion on that. So we're in objection to the variance. We're not opposed to the development. We're just concerned about the parking. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else for public hearing for this item?
Hello, my name is John Rando. I actually grew up in that neighborhood since about 1960 till now. The major problem that she doesn't talk about is there's going to be 230 units. So you can figure there's going to be about three cars per unit. So you're putting in a whole bunch of extra cars, and, oh, we're going to keep them off Evergreen. Well, you keep them off Evergreen until you don't. They need more parking. They need to rethink, you know, how they're going to do it. Parking structure, something much more substantial than what they're thinking of. If they don't do this, you're going to have nothing but trouble in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public hearing on item 18? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing, and I will pass it back to the applicant for any follow-up.
As for the parking for Arizona Charlie's, they have a parking study already, and that shows that there is significant parking there. So any parking here will not affect what is happening to the north of us.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay, I will turn it over to the commission, starting with Commissioner Rogan.
Thank you, Chair. And I'd like to thank the applicant and Mr. Solis from the Planning Department for working together on this. I think this project takes a pretty significant empty space and brings forward a mixed-use development that'll be a significant change for Decatur Boulevard, even if there's some growing pains because Decatur's really not designed as a pedestrian-oriented roadway right now, which makes putting the buildings along Decatur pretty difficult. But I think shifting the building close to Decatur will allow modification of the parking lot in the future to make it more pedestrian accessible as Decatur changes to be more pedestrian-friendly in the future. As far as the variances and waivers, I'm comfortable with them. The parking variance is minor. I really can't speak to the impacts to the neighbors to the north with regard to the Arizona Charlie's parking. I'm looking at the parking specifically for this project, and it's just a small change. And I think finally, the waivers and the landscape buffers are necessary to accommodate the parking. Right now, without any kind of high-capacity transit on Decatur, I think the waivers are fair and reasonable. So I don't have anything further to say on this. I don't know if anyone else would like to speak on this.
Anybody else? Okay, I would like to discuss the trees on Evergreen, and I have a question for you on the trees on Decatur. As you know, we've mapped Urban Heat Island impacts, and this is an area that is very high for urban heat impacts. And so, you know, you did ask for the landscape waiver on Evergreen. Is that something that you would be willing to do to fill those trees in so that we don't have to worry about that landscape being short on the number of trees for purposes, again, of providing that urban canopy?
Yes, thank you for that comment. Yeah, that's fine. We're not too short on that, and I think we can find some space to put them in there to meet that requirement on Evergreen.
Okay. And then on Decatur, following up on Commissioner Rogan's comments about, like, pedestrian, you know, sort of pedestrian status on Decatur, I think it would be great if you could have, if you could start with larger trees and start with 36-inch box trees as opposed to the 24, just to kind of like give that little extra oomph for walkability. Is that something that you'd be willing to, your client would be willing to do?
So just to confirm, it would just be along Decatur with, for the 36-inch, and then keeping the 24 along Evergreen?
I mean, I think that would be, it would be great if you could do it on Evergreen, but I understand that that's a long strip of road, and that's along a lot of trees. So for sure on Decatur, if that would be possible.
Yeah, I think we can do it on Decatur for sure. Yes, thank you.
And there is no variance for the number of trees on Decatur, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. So if that's a condition that we can get put into the record, Ms. Eddos, that would be fantastic. Anybody?
Madam Chair, those two added conditions, we will add condition A, trees shall be planted along Evergreen Avenue at a ratio of one for every 20 linear feet of street frontage, with a minimum of four five-gallon shrubs for every required tree. And added condition B will read, all trees adjacent to Decatur Boulevard shall be 36-inch box-sized trees.
Thank you. Thank you. And then just another question. Given the location of this development, are any of the units in this mixed-use development going to be accessible or affordable housing prices?
So I did discuss that with our client. They haven't looked at that specifically for this site, but I do want to note that this particular project for Four will be significantly less for rental rates than their other locations, so in essence, more affordable.
Okay, great. I mean, it's a great area, and look forward to seeing it get developed. Okay, so with that, if there are no further questions, I will pass it back to Commissioner Rogan for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. With those comments, I'd make a motion for approval, subject to staff's conditions and amended conditions read into the record tonight. And Ms. Olson, you agree to those conditions?
Yes, thank you.
All right, so the motion would be for approval of agenda item 18, project number 24-0486, inclusive of all subparts A through D.
And Madam Chair, for the record, the added conditions will be added to the SDR, 24-0486-SDR1. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Okay, please post, and that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that'll move forward to the June 18th, 2025 City Council meeting.
Thank you. Item number 19, abeyance, re-notification 24-0495-SUP1, applicant owner, Jackson Shaw Company Symphony Park Hotel LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed 32,303-square-foot alcohol on-premise full use with 11,308 square feet of outdoor seating and alcohol, off-premise ancillary beer/wine at 330 South Grand Central Parkway, Ward 5, Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends approval. May I please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, the proposed use meets all requirements for both primary and ancillary uses, proposed and can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding land uses. In addition, the proposed application would support the goals of the Vision 2045 Downtown Las Vegas Master Plan area. Therefore, staff recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening, sir. If you could please state and spell your name and give us your address for the record, and tell us about the project.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Eric Beal, E-R-I-C-B-E-A-L, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant at 330 South Grand Central Parkway. The premises will be a 441-room non-gaming hotel with a 1,200-square-foot market that will sell packaged beer/wine. The premises will contain various meeting and conference rooms, a pool, outdoor dining and drinking service, and two restaurants, including one with a bar. Otherwise, we appreciate staff's recommendation, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and close public hearing on item 19, and I will turn it back to the commission, starting with Commissioner Munford. Oh, wait, sorry. I'm having, yeah, where'd Commissioner Munford go?
Commissioner Munford went in the back. You know, I reviewed this item, and I don't have any issues with this, and I'm ready to make a motion if there's no other comments.
Should we trail it for a minute for Commissioner Munford to come back? I feel like we should.
It's not, it's at your discretion, Chair.
I'm sorry?
It's at your discretion.
It's at my discretion. Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and, sir, if you can just step back, we'll let Commissioner Munford come back, and then we'll come back to your item. Let's go to item 20, abeyance, 24-0649-VAR1, applicant owner, Alex Avo Harutynian, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request to allow a proposed residential accessory structure garage that does not conform to Title 19.06 Development Standards for Setbacks at 1600 South Valades Street, Ward 2, Seaman. Staff recommends denial. May we please have the staff report on this?
Madam Chair, revisions received on April 30th of this year depict the proposed detached garage with increased setbacks at 10 feet for the corner side yard and 5 feet for the rear yard, which now brings the proposed detached garage in conformance with Title 1906060 Development Standards for Accessory Structure Rear Yard setbacks. Despite these amendments, the applicant has provided no justification relating to the physical characteristics of the property to warrant this variance request. Has no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance relating to the physical characteristics of the property have been presented to warrant the requested variance. Staff finds the hardship to be self-imposed and preferential in nature. Therefore, staff recommends denial of this variance request. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome back. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, and give us your address and tell us about the project and any updates.
Good evening. My name is Alex Harutynian, H-A-R-U-T-Y-U-N-Y-A-N. Yes, I'm back with pretty much the same proposal, but this time we were able to push the garage a little bit back, and instead of 15-feet setback, we're asking if you guys are okay to go with 10-feet setback.
Okay, thank you. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing, and I will turn it back to the commission. Commissioner Walsh is not here tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Schlotman to start.
Yes, Chairwoman, through you. I reviewed this. I mean, we went through it last month, and I think Commissioner Walsh was wanting you to bring back a plan. You did bring it back a plan, and I think this is a little bit more appropriate than what we've seen last month, and I can get behind it now that you have the 10 feet versus the 3 feet. I don't like seeing buildings and garages built right up against a property line or a fence. It just creates all sorts of issues. So this is a lot better, and you'll see my support. So thank you for taking the month, or two months, and getting this, getting this right. If there's no other comments, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Please proceed.
Yes, Chairwoman, through you. On item number 20, abeyance, 24-0649-VAR1, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions. And you agree to all staff's conditions? You agree to all staff's conditions of approval?
Yes, yes.
Okay, then my motion's for approval.
Okay, thank you. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Okay, please post. And, oh, me? Please post. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that item is final action unless appealed to the clerk in 10 days.
Thank you. Okay, if you want to come back up for 19, and we'll wrap this up. Commissioner Munford, this is an item in your ward, so just wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant or make any comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And sorry about that.
It's okay.
Sixty years old, nature called, and I didn't realize this was in my ward. But for the liquor, for the, is that just wine and beer?
For the market, yes. It'll be packaged wine and beer. Really, it's intended for guests to, it's like a gift shop, so guests will buy packaged beer/wine, and then take it up to their room.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't have any problem with this, and if there's any other questions from the board?
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this one? All right, seeing none, Commissioner Munford, if you'd like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to motion for approval, subject to our conditions, for abeyance, re-notification 24-0495, special use permit. I'd like to motion for approval.
Okay, thank you. And you do agree to all of staff's conditions? And you do agree to all of staff's conditions?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Rogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Kasama.
Aye.
Okay, please post. And that motion carries.
Madam Chair, that item is final action unless appealed to the clerk in 10 days.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Item 21, Abeyance, 25-0027, applicant Summit Homes of Nevada LLC. Owner: Brer Rabbit LLC. For possible action on the following land use entitlement project request at the northeast corner of Donald Road and Leon Avenue, Ward 6, Bruni. Staff recommends approval on 25-0027-ZON1. Staff recommends denial on 25-0027 VAR1 and TMP1. We've had 21A as abeyance, 25-0027-ZON1 from RE Residence Estate to R1 Single Family Residential. 21B was stricken, and then 21C as abeyance, 25-0027 TMP1, Donald and Leon, for a proposed 10-lot single-family residential subdivision. May we please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, revisions received on April 23 have reduced the proposed residential development from 10 lots to 8, and the ingress/egress changed from Donald Road to Leon Avenue. The street was changed from a 40-foot-wide private street to a 49-foot-wide public street with a standard cul-de-sac terminus. This has resulted in the variance being stricken as it is no longer necessary, and the landscape buffer waiver request has also been eliminated as the 6-foot-wide buffers are now provided. Staff finds the rezoning request is in conformance with the general plan designation of low-density residential, and the proposed tentative map meets the requirements set forth by Title 19 and NRS. Therefore, staff recommends approval of both. Please note additional documents of protest was received after publication. Thank you.
And staff, Public Works, Josh Edelman here for the record. We have two conditions that we'd like to change, just to reflect the changed site plan. Item, the Condition 6, which is grant a minimum 20-foot public sewer drainage and pedestrian access easement to be privately maintained for the public sewer, drainage, and pedestrian path within commonant element C. The easement shall be identified as a public sewer, drainage, and pedestrian easement on the final map of this site. And then changing Condition 10 to read, the approval of all public works related improvements shown on this tentative map is in concept only. Specific design and construction details relating to size, type, and/or alignment of improvements, including but not limited to streets, sewer, and drainage improvements, shall be resolved prior to approval of the construction plans by the city. No deviations from adopted city standards shall be allowed unless specific written approval for such is received from the city engineer prior to the recordation of a final map or the approval of subdivision-related construction plans, whichever may occur first. Approval of this tentative map does not constitute approval of any deviations. If such approval cannot be obtained, a revised tentative map must be submitted showing elimination of such deviations.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address, and tell us about the project.
Sure. Robert Cunningham, 6030 South Jones Boulevard with Tanny Engineering, representing Summit Homes, the applicant. My address, oh, I'm sorry, I already said that. I had one question on the proposed conditions, if I can ask for clarification. Did you say 25 feet in width in Condition 6? I didn't catch it. You were going really fast.
It was 20 feet.
20 feet, thank you. Okay. With that, I'll begin my presentation. Our site is located approximately at the northeast corner of Donald and Leon, on a vacant piece of property here. It's adjacent to, everything in yellow is R1, and everything in green is RE, so we're adjacent to R1 to the north and to the west, and RE to the east and to the south. We started this project initially, as staff indicated, requesting 10 lots here. Approximately three months ago, I believe, we came to a planning commission meeting. The item was obeyed due to some staff notification issues. We since abated another additional time. We had, I had met personally with some of the neighbors in the hallway after the first planning commission meeting, and then subsequent to that, we held a neighborhood meeting at Aliante Library. We sent out notices to within 1,500 feet, and we had about 12 or 13 people come to that meeting. This is something that wasn't required. This is a conforming zone change, but we went the extra step and effort to try to see what the neighbors' oppositions were and address as many concerns as we could. We are coming before you today with the site plan that you see here with eight lots instead of 10 lots. We moved the, the street from Donald to Leon. We have increased the lot size. We have asked for no waivers. We removed all the variances and waivers that were being requested before, which there were several. Connectivity was one of them. Another one was a dead-end private street that's not gated. Another one was minor variance for the landscaping buffer. All of those are removed from the site, as staff indicated, and we are not asking for a single waiver. We're proposing a public street with sidewalk all around, offsites all the way around, as is conditioned. At the neighborhood meeting, there were multiple items brought up and topics brought up by the neighbors, some of which are here, and I'm sure you'll hear. One of the items that was very vocal at that meeting was they wanted to see an all-single-story community. And going back and forth with the developer, they had proposed a combination of single-story and two-story homes in this community, and as of this morning, I'm happy to tell you that we're going to agree to a condition be added for all single-story homes in this entire community. With that being said, that would mean that all of the homes in here, even though there's two-story homes directly north of us, we would still have single-story homes in our entire community, which I think is, is a nice addition to help some of the concerns of some of the neighbors that live to the north and in the adjacent area. We agree with all of staff's recommendations for approval of the entire project. I'm going to conclude my presentation and answer additional questions after the neighbors come up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
My name is Dennis Perry at 7320 Silver Spirit Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89131. I'm representing 5625 Codea Court, which is, the property is directly adjacent to this right here. I'm very happy to hear that the developers decided to do single-story. That was one of my issues. The only other issue I may have is there is a very tall fence in there to maintain the privacy of the homes that are already existing. I would just like to see if there's some type of condition, because grading plans change things, the height of the home, the pad site, is to maybe have that this developer, the top of their windows, not exceed the height of the zone boundary wall on the south side of Sadie Estates. They have, there's 16 courses, the fence from Leon is 16 courses high, steps down to 15 courses, and then 14 courses to the extent of, I believe, this property right here, and I think that should safely keep the windows from people being able to look into each other's yards. This particular home was owned by my sister. She passed away March 10, and she has 32 feet of sliding windows. For the kitchen, the living room, and the master bedroom, that doesn't include normal glass. So, and I think the other neighbors would probably have the same problem. I'm happy that they did the eight lots. Otherwise, I think it's a great development, speaking for myself, because we're already on R1 lot, so we don't have half acre or two acres, so just speaking for myself on this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment?
Yes, I'd like to, Robert Kingston, I spoke during the public segment. I'd like to echo previous gentleman's comments about single-story homes. That makes a significant difference. Some of the concerns I have here is the quality of the roadways themselves. That roadway, I lived there when it was all gravel road, so it was just asphalt over existing gravel, so it's just PM10 paving. So a concern was if we up the number of trips through there, that that pavement's not going to last, as evidenced by the fact that it already has. So the number of lots is a concern. When you look at, these are all one-acre residential estates. This is a two-acre residential estate. This is where I live, immediately adjacent and next-door neighbor. These are acre properties. All of these R1s do not access these roadways, and there are no streetlights or curb-gutter sidewalk in there. So we want to maintain that rural style of living. We have a lot of people that ride horses, walk their dogs, kid-ride bikes, and all that kind of stuff. So we want to preserve that as much as we can. I'm sure the developer wouldn't have an issue with not having to construct some of those expensive improvements. We don't want them in there. Same would hold true for streetlights in that cul-de-sac area. It would just, you know, just wash out the whole sky when we don't have them on the, on the adjacent, on the adjacent roadways. One concern I have is I'm looking at to the north here, the existing R1 development. If you count them, there's seven lots, and the square footage of that parcel is actually bigger than what is being developed here. So the density of homes on this two-acre parcel is actually greater than it is here, and this is the only development, R1, that accesses these roadways from Deer Springs to Elkhorn between Leon and Jeanette. So, you know, obviously, more people we put in here, more traffic, more traffic with horses and dogs and all that kind of stuff. Ideally, which I'm sure the developer wouldn't want, would be half-acre lots or four there, but I think eight is a better number than 10. I would be supportive of six lots in there. I think that that would match the development that's R1 that's immediately to the north. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else? If you have an item and there's somebody speaking, come down to the podium, so we can just be efficient. Go ahead, ma'am.
My name's Teresa Robinson. I reside at 7110 Jeanette Street, which is this spot right here. Las Vegas, Nevada, 89131. The rear west wall of my property borders a subject property. I am also very grateful that they've decided to go with the one-story homes. I think that is a great concession, but I oppose the property as it's currently written just because of the amount of homes that they're putting in. I think four to six homes is far more reasonable to give enough room. I have horses of my own and horses that I foster ride over that backyard, and I'm concerned with how close those horses, I mean, those houses are going to be to my back wall. Also, that's where we walk the horses around. Some of them, you know, need to be walked for their elderly horses, their foster horses, that need to be walked around, and I'm concerned for the, the additional traffic that, that we would see there. Also, this wall, I would hope that they would match, the wall between us is the same height as the wall with the development that borders the Codea Court. Like he was saying, that it provides a lot of additional privacy, and also concerned with the elevation, as he also mentioned, to make that wall over. Another thing, I don't know that has been mentioned, but is the drainage. When they made this development, our entire wall here, they, we have our wall, and then they built another wall that comes right up against it, and then I, I'm not sure what happened with the drainage, but that entire wall is kind of crumbling, and, and so I don't know if they put the drainage or the sprinkler or the irrigation too close, but it's very unsightly, and it affects our side of it. So also, a little concerned about, about that, just for the future. I think that's about it. I, again, very thankful for the one stories, just for privacy reasons, and I, I'm done. That's all I have to say. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Good evening. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, and go ahead.
My name is Dawn Box. I live at 5508 Donald Road. That's two properties to the east of this proposed development.
I'm Richard Box, 5508 Donald Road as well. Last name's spelled B-O-X.
So our concern is, and definitely appreciate the, first of all, your time and consideration, but I definitely appreciate the consideration to go one story. That was definitely one of our concerns. Our main concern is the density here on these properties in our rural community. We did not come down here when Toll Brothers wanted to build, you know, reasonable, the border communities. We understand someone's not going to want to build a custom home on a main street like Jones or Elkhorn. So, you know, to be reasonable, we didn't come down. We did ask that they build one stories along our property, along our community, and they did that, and not to have an access road into our community, and they did accommodate that. They did not do a side, put in a sidewalk on Leon, back there on Leon. I don't know if that, that's here, but here on Leon, they did not put sidewalk just to keep it rural, and so they were not required to do that. And of course, we were asking the same along Donald, that they would keep that rural. But my concern is the density. It's the traffic. It's the, we are, this, none of the other communities have access to our community, and so it kept our neighborhood rural as it is zoned for. And so we are just asking that you would consider that, you know, this neighborhood, there's, I've not even seen this property on the market. I don't look that often, but when I do, I have not seen this, so I don't, I don't know if this has even been offered to anybody who would like to build for what it's already zoned for. I would like to see that. And as some of the other neighbors stated, our concern is the density here and the size of the lots. The community, the R1 community to the east of our community, the properties adjacent to our community are 10,000-square-foot lots, minimum, and like I said, Toll Brothers, they're a little bit smaller, but they don't have any access into our neighborhood, nor does the community to the east. These properties are all under 10,000 square feet, with even some of them on Donald Road being closer to the lower 8,000 square feet, and one even under 8,000 square feet. We don't feel like this fits in our neighborhood. It looks, it, it looks out of place when you have these one-acre properties surrounding it, and like I said, the border communities, they're on the border, so it doesn't really affect the look or the feel of our rural community, but this one will, with the extra traffic also having, wanting to get onto Jones either through Elkhorn or on Deer Springs, which is already backs up now, so it would add extra traffic there, and we would just like you to consider the look of our, our neighborhood of Las Vegas. When I mentioned this to somebody, they said, "Oh, it sounds like Las Vegas," and I was like, "That shouldn't have to be that way." We would really like to preserve our neighborhood, and a minimum of 10,000-square-foot lots, I don't think is reasonable when it's already zoned for, for half-acre lots. So...
Sorry, ma'am, if you can yet wrap up.
Yep. No, I say ditto to all that. It's the density that we have a problem with. We live where we live for a reason, and this changes that, and so I'm in agreement with those comments.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sir, I'm sorry. Can you, did you give us your name for the record? I think you did, didn't you?
I did, yes.
Yeah, you did before you started speaking.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Cunningham, did you want to come up and provide any further comment? Anybody else? I'm sorry, I have to close public hearing. Anybody else on this item? Nope. All right, I will close public comment and pass it back over to the applicant.
I can address some of the concerns and provide a couple points of clarification. So the first one I heard was, this is our north boundary right here. This is the wall that's along the north boundary. These are the two single-story homes, I believe, one of the first gentlemen who spoke was concerned about. This site has a retaining wall in it with a screen wall on top of it. This wall is about eight to nine feet high, varying in locations. We do not plan to increase the elevation along this wall or property line at all on our, on our development here. So it's our intent to come in and actually try to match or lower the grade along this area where these homes are located, so that there won't be walls, you know, we won't be elevating above it with windows sticking in to see their lots. So that was the first item there. See here, there was another item saying about sidewalk on Leon. The adjacent site that we're directly next to has sidewalk already on Leon, and it's our intent to continue that down. While Toll Brothers did not build this on the other side, it's already existing on this side, and the city has conditioned us to add it to our, our site. We believe it completes a sidewalk system, and with sidewalk internal in our site, our residents could walk out of the site. The wall height that is located, let me see if I can find that here. This is directly to our east. This is a wall... This is the wall height right here and the wall color. Uh, today, this is not even a six-foot-high wall. We will probably be elevating above this upwards of two to three feet in areas and it would be a double wall situation as one of the neighbors indicated. It would be our intent to match the color and the likeness of this wall and have that provide privacy between both parties' properties there. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the board has. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay. Pass it back to the commission, starting with, um, me. And I wanted to ask you a couple of questions. Number one, on that lot, on the lots that are but Jeanette, what's the setback that you would expect, um, for those lots, for the backyard?
I'll just clarify. Jeanette is over here. We're not directly adjacent to, Donald is on the south and Leon is on this side. Jeanette is approximately 330 feet to the east of us.
But the two lots that are immediately east of the proposed subdivision sit off of Jeanette and, correct? And Donald?
These lots face Jeanette, correct?
Okay.
And so these two lots are the ones you're speaking of, just to clarify?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. So the setback over here, the code requires five feet setback minimum from the property line. Uh, the current properties have accessory structures that are sitting approximately five feet or so from the property line and they're single-story in nature. We would be having similar setback.
Okay. And those are accessory structures on those lots?
Right.
About the primary residence?
Correct. Let me see if I can find the area. This is the best area I have unless the city is able to help me. But these two have accessory structures located in the rear. Their primary structures, I believe, are closer to Jeanette.
Okay. Um, and then because this is a subdivision, are you going to have an HOA so that any of the neighbors have any issues with the subdivision? They've got a single point of contact for corrections.
It, I believe it's required by the city when you have common elements and we have at least two.
All right. Um, and then along Donald, um, what is the landscape buffering going to be along Donald? And then are you, you talked about the sidewalk, are you going to have curb and gutter and streetlights on Donald?
Currently, it's conditioned by the city and a condition to have full offsites on Donald and Leon, which would include a streetlight, curb, gutter, sidewalk as well. Uh, along both Leon and Donald, we plan to have landscaping meeting all of the city's code requirements. Along Leon, there are power overhead utility poles and power poles will be restricted with plant material over here. Along Donald, we plan to plant aggressively fast-growing trees that would, um, in aid in covering up the wall there.
Okay. Um, I don't know if we've ever talked about that. Uh, are those fast-growing trees going to start at 36-inch box?
Uh, it would be ideal that we would start with just fast-growing trees that would be 24-inch box if, if possible.
I think it would be ideal if you could start with 36-inch box. So, um, we can.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be great. And, um, so you're saying the city conditions full offsites, but I think you had also said that you'd be willing to just not have the offsites on Donald. Is that right?
If the city doesn't enact a deferral fee, which, or, you know, is able to allow us to just pay what the contractor would build it for, then sure, we would do that. We don't want to have to pay additional above the, sometimes the city's deferral fees or in excess of what it requires to actually build it. So I don't know if Public Works can speak on that or not.
Uh, yes, through you, Chair. We would, we would amend condition five to remove, construct half-street improvements, but leave the rest of the condition that talks about offsite utilities extending and pavement fixing.
Okay. Hold on one second. So you would, so it would just be the extend all required underground utilities such as electrical, telephone, et cetera, located within public rights away?
Yes.
That would be the remaining? Okay. And then if you don't put in those improvements, I understand that there's like a bond that they're required to maintain or some type of?
Yes, there is a deferral fee that they're required to pay.
Okay. And we could put that language in?
Yes.
Or if we need to? Okay.
We could replace, uh, that first sentence with apply for a administrative deferral of offsite improvements, which would, we would determine then if the fee was required to be paid.
All right. And then, okay, so for the offsites then, you would have it on Leon, but then you would just not have the offsites to maintain the rural character on Donald? But you would have, you'd apply for that administrative, whatever it was called?
Deferral fee.
Deferral fee, thank you. Um, and then as far as streetlights, are there streetlights going in on Leon that you were planning on or not?
Again, the Public Works, um, they conditioned them, full offsites, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Half-street improvements, which is yes, basically.
Okay. On the rest of Leon, north of you, like where Cota is, are there streetlights up that way?
I don't believe there are, no.
Okay. Can we just have them match then what's the, what is existing up, um, Leon so that it's consistent for the quality of the neighborhood?
Yes.
And then that could be part of the administrative deferral fee as well?
Yes.
As streetlights?
Yes.
Okay. And then Donald would just be no streetlights, maintain the rural character, no curbs and gutters. Um, all right. And then just for some clarification, um, this is not, if you want to talk a little bit about what the actual density is at this lot, at this, um, site and what the master plan is right now versus what you're asking for, for the zoning?
And, uh, planning staff can confirm this, but I believe this is master plan to be allowed to, up to five units per acre, uh, which we started with 10 lots initially. We dropped to eight, which reduced the density, uh, below that threshold.
Madam Chair, for clarification, the area is a general plan designation of low, which allows 5.5 dwelling units per acre and this proposal is 4.81 dwelling units per acre.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Um, and then I just wanted to do one more sort of follow-up on the windows, the, the question of grading and the windows. And so can you confirm that, that the design for these homes, that the tops of those windows of the lots adjacent to the south boundary wall of Sadie, that they won't exceed the height of that south boundary wall so that you're not having windows looking down into those lots?
It's the intent of us, of this project to be graded in that manner, but I, without having a precise grading plan and the exact elevation that's going to go on that lot, I can't 100% guarantee it. But I can tell you that the point of, our lowest point is right here located on Donald and the point up here is approximately two feet higher. And then there's a two-foot retaining wall and this home is two feet, two feet higher than that. Based on our, our preliminary cross-sections that we have here, we don't, do not anticipate raising the grade at the back of this lot. So the 10th or eight to nine-foot-high wall would remain there so long as the windows, the top of the windows was below nine feet. We believe that we would be, meet the intent of that requirement.
Okay. And that is not something you can actually confirm until you give drainage plans?
I don't have a grading plan today.
Okay.
We typically don't prepare those to that level unless this gets approved.
Okay. Um, I just would like to have some way to make sure that that's confirmed and that that's, you know, the work that you've done and the agreements that you've made in terms of maintaining that privacy for Cota Court, that we can assure that that can happen. So what can we do between now, since this does have to go to City Council, what can we do between now and City Council to kind of get that confirmation?
I would have to provide a detailed grading plan of that area and determine the exact plan, floor plan that would go on that lot to determine that.
Okay. Um, is that something that can be done? I know it's.
We can attempt to do that between now and, if this moves forward to City Council, yes.
Okay. That'd be, that would be great if you can do that. And then if.
I would agree also to meet with, um, the, the gentleman who made that comment and show him directly.
Okay.
On what we come up with, so.
Okay. That would be, that would be good too, since that was, uh, his particular issue and he is the ra, the one who's raised the, the grading issues. Okay. Um, sorry for all those questions, my fellow commissioners. Just wanted to kind of work through several of these issues. Does anyone else have questions? Anybody? Yep.
Uh, Lou DiSalvio, I just want to thank the applicant after meeting with them and talking over the weekend, uh, reducing it to eight lots and going a single-story. I know that's a hit, um, but greatly appreciated to be harmonious and compatible, uh, especially what you have right across the street, you know, 199 homes going in there. Uh, I like the, uh, there's one thing I learned on this planning commission is we can't guarantee views. That, that I get, but every, anything you can do to try to accommodate that would be greatly appreciated. That's one of our biggest pet peas on an infill project regardless of what ward you're in. Infills are never easy because people get used to just what they have and it's hard and it's difficult, but I do appreciate you accommodating. And then I also know in the past, as being a planning commissioner in that area, anytime we did have residents come forward for an infill project and, I live right down the street from there, so trust me, I get it. We hate light pollution out in Ward Six, but putting the infrastructure in and not sanding the poles is what we've done for years. So I, I'm, I'm sure we can get that on without having an issue. So, and I appreciate that too, because again, we don't like light pollution out there. Um, with that said, I know I can get behind it 100% just for the reduction in the lot size, uh, homes and being single-story, right there for me was a, a selling point. So I appreciate that.
Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Chair, I want to throw you. Uh, just a couple of comments on the streetlights and Public Works can, um, clarify this, but I, uh, just like you were saying, I, I think you'll have the option of either if, if there's no clarification tonight, if you're putting in streetlights or not putting in streetlights, uh, but where you can put in the conduit and then I think the city requires you to just give the, the city the streetlights if you're not putting them in. So therefore it's not costing you anymore. Um, that way, if the city assigns some exorbitant fee to what that would actually cost, you would, you could actually get, get around that by just putting in the infrastructure and donating the lights versus erecting the lights. Is that correct? I've, I've, I've read this many a times in staff reports.
I would have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I can fill in a little bit too. There, there is an option of where they put in the infrastructure and then, like you said, either, uh, contribute the funds or poles to where that at some point, if the city does have to come back in and install those light poles, that it, the taxpayers aren't ultimately paying for it.
Right.
Thank you.
And then, uh, I, I'm, I'm happy you're going with the single-story, um, that you'll come to that conclusion. Another thing is the, the, I do understand the windows and looking through and it's really difficult at this stage to really understand with the grading plan and without spending an extra $10,000, $15,000 putting that together. But if we're looking at a, a grade on a particular lot and that wall's up eight, nine feet and we have a, I mean, we would need like a nine-foot window and then at that point, what are you looking at? You're looking up at, out in the sky. You're not looking into the neighbors. So you're actually a little bit lower. And that was one of my questions when, uh, when, when you come up here, I was going to ask, who's higher? I was looking at Google Maps and it does look like you're lower. So, uh, but that would be a little bit more, uh, I'm not saying it's not important here, but it would definitely be significantly more important if he was on a higher lot than a lower lot. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Oops, thank you. Any other comments, um, from the commissioners on the phone or Commissioner Munford? Commissioner Rogan, Commissioner Kasama?
I would like to read the amended condition into the record.
Oh, hang on one second. I just, I thought that Commissioner Kasama might have had a comment.
Um, yeah, just a very.
Okay. All right. Go ahead and read the conditions in.
Uh, so the amended condition would be construct half-street improvements including a tro, appropriate transition over paving and streetlights on Leon Avenue. I'm just checking that streetlights is yes on Leon. Yes. Uh, adjacent to the site concurrent with the development of the site, Donald Road will remain as-is to preserve the rural character of the street. Pay deferral fees as determined through the administrative offsite deferral application process. And then the rest is as-is. Extend all required underground utilities such as electrical, telephone, et cetera, located within public rights away past the boundaries of the site prior to construction of hard-surfacing asphalt or concrete. All existing paving damaged or removed by this development shall be restored at its original location and to its original width concurrent with development of this site.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, um, to add to the conditions you discussed earlier about the single-story and the tree size, um, the condition that Public Works just read into the record, this will all be added to the tentative map application. That is 25-0027 TMP1. We will add a condition that reads all lots are limited to single-story dwelling units. And a second condition that would read all landscape buffer trees shall be 36-inch box sized trees. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you for all of the work.
Can I just make one point of clarification? On Leon, there, there are power poles I could show you here. And I don't know that, so you can see the power poles and the lines that go here. We could plant bigger trees, but I, we're going to be limited on what we can plant here. So.
I, I, I think the majority of the concern on the 36-inch box was on Donald.
She just read all trees. That's why I asked.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you can just limit the 36-inch box.
We can amend that to, um, landscape buffer trees on Donald.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, I really want to thank you for all the work you did on this. I mean, it is, I, I understand the neighbors concerned, you know, we met with them and, and this is a, a unique area, um, but I do think that this, the certainty of this project and knowing, you know, that they will all be single-stories, and I really appreciate you letting me push and push and push on that, um, is, is going to make this harmonious for this area, even if it's not, um, exactly what all the neighbors wanted. Um, I think that we've gotten to a, a good place and appreciate the, the work that was done on this and, um, and just want to say thank you again for all the, the time you spent with the neighbors. Um, so with that, I am prepared to make a motion to approve item 21 and all its related subparts. And there is a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, please post and that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Madam Chair, that'll be moving forward to the June 18th, 2025 City Council meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Item 22, abeyance 25-0042 VAR1, applicant owner S.J. Isaacs Revocable Trust for Possible Action on a Land Use Entitlement Project Request to Allow a Six-Foot Side Yard Setback Where 10 Feet Is Required for Proposed Addition to an Existing Single Family Dwelling at 7900 Rockwin Court. Ward Two, Seaman Staff Commends Denial. May I please have the staff report?
Good evening.
May I please have, um, staff's going to give me their report first. No problem.
Yes, Madam Chair. So no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance related to the physical characteristics of the property has been presented to warrant the requested variance. As such, the hardship here is self-imposed and therefore staff recommends denial of this variance request. If approved, it will be subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if you could please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address and tell us about the project.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners Edgar Montalvo, 3606, Calico Brook Court, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89147, representing the homeowners that are here with me. Uh, pretty much what we have here is a single-family residence. They're trying to build an RV garage on the side of the house and we're exceeding the setbacks. So this is, uh, within a small community, a nine-house community, and they have the support of all their neighbors. So I want to handle these, uh, letters of support. One of them was mail and also they have the HOA approval for them. So it's, uh, pretty much the side setback what they're exceeding and, um, we've been working with the staff and we have a small conversation with, uh, the commissioner, um, the, the councilwoman, Seaman, and, uh, she knows the case. She's willing to support us if necessary, but we hope that we can have a final action here. So pretty much that's what it is.
Um, my name is Scott Isaacs. I'm the homeowner at 7900 Rockwin Court, uh, 89117. Uh, my wife and I moved, uh, relocated here about a year ago, worked closely with the community even before we bought the home to facilitate the garage. Uh, the, our neighbor's home is actually a sports court and adjacent garage that we're that we're butting up against and we worked very closely with her to, and the HOA, to ensure that everyone be okay and to ensure that we were aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. That was extremely important. The calculations that went into the garage were very careful. We have a lot of friends that also have vans. It's really not a true RV, it's a 22-foot van. And to help keep the community happy, if they visit, we made sure there's that parking pad behind the garage, which is why it's pulled forward a little. So a lot of this was done with very careful consideration. It wasn't arbitrary or an artifact of anything else. This kind of fell out mathematically what we were trying to accomplish. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, this item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing and I will turn it back over to the Commission. And with Commissioner Walsh being out, I will pass it to Commissioner Schlotman.
Thank you, Chairwoman, through you. Have reviewed this item and I noticed that the one neighbor that, or we had two people that actually responded with support cards and the one was directly across the street from you.
Yes.
And support. And usually I would say the one that's most affected is the one directly to the side. But looking at the photos of your house, you're about, I don't know, six, seven, eight feet lower than your neighbor. So the one that's really going to see it will be the one in front. It looks like you did, had hired the right person who integrated this into the roof line and did a good job with that. So considering all those things, I can get behind this item.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no other comments, we'll go ahead and make a motion. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes. Madam Chair, through you, item number 22, abeyance 25-0042 VAR1, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions and you agree with all staff's conditions of approval. Do you agree?
Yes, we agree to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Rogan? Oh, Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Great. And please.
My computers having issues and really slow, so mark that as an aye for Trinity Schlotman.
Okay, please post and that motion carries. Okay.
Madam Chair, that'll be going, oh, sorry, that is final action unless appealed to the city clerk in 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 24, 24-0513 VAR, applicant Santos Aguilar, owner Leani Gonzalez Agüelis, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request to allow existing detached residential accessory structures, carports and storage buildings that do not comply with Title 19.06 Development Standards for setback separation size, location and aesthetic compatibility and to allow a front yard fence that does not conform with Title 19.06 Front Yard Wall and Fence Development Standards at 2104 Santa Rita Drive, Ward 3 Diaz. Staff recommends denial. May I please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented in that the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by installing detached carports and residential accessory structures for the subject site without permits that do not comply with current Title 19 setback, building separation size, location and aesthetic compatibility requirements in addition to a fence that does not meet front yard fence development standards. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the variance request. Please note additional documents of protest and support were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address and tell us about the project.
Yes, good evening. My name is Santos Aguilar, S-A-N-T-O-S. Aguilar's A-G-U-I-L-A-R. I apologize for my voice, but I got a cold over the weekend. The project has been ongoing for quite some time. The homeowner had actually built the carports in front for storage of their vehicles because they keep getting vandalized on the actual streets in front of the homes. So that's the reason for the carports and also for the fencing. The accessory structures in the backyard are movable structures. They're not permanently placed in with footings. They are used for their dogs that they have. They use them as dog houses. They're kind of big dog houses, but that's what they use them for. But they're not permanent structures. There's also an octagon in the back that's for water for the dogs. With that being said, that's, all the structures in the back are movable, including the octagon in the back. And that was the reason for the, the carport, the carports in the front are because of the vandalism that they are encountering in that area. Just recently, the neighbor to the south of this home has also built a fence similar to what we have here. I'm just looking at some of the pictures that you have. I didn't take any pictures, but they're also mending a fence of the same sort at the same height for the neighbors to the direct south of their property because of the same situation of the vandalism and just the people that walk through there, they're just breaking into vehicles. Yes.
Thank you, sorry. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on this item? Nope, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public hearing and turn it back over to the Commission, starting with Commissioner Schlotman.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. I reviewed this item and, you know, the, the storage units in the back, I don't have an issue with, but I do have an issue with the carports in the front because we don't, current code doesn't allow them in the front. There's no, there's no other carports in that neighborhood that I've seen. And I've never really been one to approve a carport in a front yard. So they really stick out. They come all the way out to the, one of them comes all the way out to the property line. And with the addition of both of those, I think you have like 75% coverage of whatever the primary dwelling is. You get rid of those, you get rid of the, you get below the 50% coverage with your accessory dwelling. So I can get behind the storage units in the back. I can't get behind the, the carports in the front.
Would it be possible to remove one of the carport covers in the front to leave one for parking off the street? Could that be possible?
I don't, I don't think I could get behind either one. I mean, we could hear and see if anybody else has any comments on this. If, I'm also curious if anybody else has comments on the perforated screen material on the fence. Not a huge fan of it, but I have seen it used on other properties in the neighborhood. So I, if we do approve that, a question for staff. I know, I think we're calling this a five-foot-tall solid wall, but is there a way that we can somehow rephrase it to where it's perforated metal with limited visibility? I'd hate to approve a variance that for a solid wall in the front yard and then this get torn down and the applicant think that they could build a five-foot-tall solid block wall because I think that would, that would be pretty, pretty bad.
With the perforated screen in front, that still classifies as a wall? Solid wall?
Are you asking if the, the screen and mashes?
Yes, perforated screen.
That's, that's the reason why they're classifying as a solid wall is due to the perforated steel. And I'm seeing if I can come up with some kind of condition that would allow you to keep that with, without you tearing it down, rebuilding the solid wall based on what we're saying today.
Gotcha.
But if anybody else has any comments on this? If not, I'll look to staff for.
Madam Chair, through you, so for clarification, the carports would not be approved?
Correct.
Okay, so we would need to change condition number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 and 6 to read a variance is hereby denied for conditions 1 through 6. And then for the fence, we would read, that would be condition number 11 would be edited to read a variance is hereby approved to allow a seven-foot-tall perforated metal fence with limited visibility where five feet is a maximum allowed with two feet, with two-foot block and three-foot wrought iron required for visibility.
Thank you. And did you understand what she just read into the record?
Can you repeat that? On the fence?
Ms. Eddos, if I could have you repeat that one more time?
Madam Chair, through you, the, the condition would read so that the fence would essentially be allowed to remain in its current condition. And that would be a variance is hereby approved to allow a seven-foot-tall perforated metal fence with limited visibility.
Okay.
Okay. And that, that fence is currently seven feet. It, it looks like it's five, five and a half feet.
About five and a half.
Okay. So do you understand that condition?
Yes.
Okay. And you understand the, if we strike conditions 1 through 6 or deny items 1 through 6, that means that you would need to remove those carports?
Okay.
And, and you, you would agree to those conditions?
Yes.
Okay. I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you. Please make your motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, item number 24, 24-0513 VAR1, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions and the modified condition number 11 as read into the record by staff. And then denying conditions 1 through 6. Would it be a denial of 1 through 6 or striking 1 through 6?
The, the conditions of approval we read into the record that those would be changed from a variance is hereby approved to a variance is hereby denied.
Okay. And so the variance is hereby denied on, on conditions 1 through 6. That is my motion.
Ms. Eddos, can you clarify the height of that fence? The, the backup seems to indicate the fence is five and a half feet, not, I think you indicated it was a bit taller. It's page 20 of the PDF, Nicole.
Yes, on page 6 of the backup, we've got posts that are a little over six feet tall. So to, we don't, as staff, we, we prefer not to go down to the inch just in case there's a measuring give or take. So we typically will round up. So we rounded it up to seven feet to account for the posts that are over six feet tall.
Okay, thank you for the clarity.
All right, my motion stands.
All right, everybody, please cast your votes. Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner DeSavio? Having tech issues? Okay, great, please post and that carries.
Madam Chair, that will be moving forward to City Council on June 18th, 2025.
Thank you. Item 25, 25-0067, applicant Somerset Academy. Sir, you're, you're good.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
My hair is all.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night. All right, sorry. 25-0067, applicant Somerset Academy of Las Vegas, owner Somerset Academy of Las Vegas et al. For possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests at 7038, 7058 and 7078 Sky Point Drive, Ward 6, Bruni. Staff recommends approval on 25-0067 GPA1. Staff recommends denial, sorry, on 25-0067 VAR1, SUP1 and SDR1. 25A is 25-0067 GPA1 to amend the Las Vegas 2050 Master Plan Trails and Bike Streets map to relocate an approved shared-use trail segment generally located east of Sky Point Drive, north of Deer Springs Way. 25B, 25-0067 VAR1 to allow 471 parking spaces where 570 spaces are required. 25C, 25-0067 SUP1 for a major amendment of an approved special use permit, SUP45941 for proposed addition to an existing public or private school, primary and second use, APN12521202001. 25D, 25-0067 SDR1 for a major amendment of an approved site development plan review, SDR45943 for proposed 28,612 square foot addition to an existing 145,287 square foot primary and secondary school with onsite parking and playground improvements with waivers of the Town Center Development Standards Manual and Title 19 perimeter landscape buffer requirements. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. The proposed realignment of the shared-use trail is appropriate as it ensures the continuity of the public trail system without disrupting normal school operations. The new route would provide a safer alternative to the existing required trail segment. As the shared-use trail section is in conformance with the requirements of Title 1904420, staff recommends approval of the general plan amendment. However, staff has determined that the site is proposed to be overbuilt beyond its capacity to accommodate both Town Center and Title 19 requirements for parking, landscape buffer widths and building facade treatment. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the variance, special use permit and site development plan review subject to conditions of approved. Please note, additional letters of protest have been submitted since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. After, good evening, sir. I keep thinking it's afternoon. Good evening, sir. Can you please state and spell your name for the record and give us your address and tell us about the project?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners, my name's Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing Somerset Academy on item 25 with the accompanying applications that are being requested. As I show you on the overhead here is existing here in the highlight today as you see here. It's an existing Somerset Academy. It is a primary and secondary school. It's been in operation for about 10-plus years in this area. It does have access up here. You can see like a STEM road and it goes to the north here out on Elkhorn. We have an ingress and ingress also to the school on Sky Point Drive in this area. The property is approximately 12 and a half acres. What we're asking for is for a special use permit today for an expansion within the school. One part of it is to expand approximately 3.7 acres of property, which is to the south tip of this, of the existing property there. That in this area, we're asking to expand. That's going to be essentially, as I show you here in this drawing here, is going to be for additioning, additional parking lot in this area. We have some sports courts that are planned in this area and some turf green space. With respect to the general plan amendment for the trail alignment, currently there is a trail that is located here that is supposed to cut through the property in this area and connect to Sky Point. What we've asked to do and staff's recommending approval for that general plan amendment is to realign that trail alignment instead of going across and onto our property here, coming across the parking lot and the playground area. We would take that trail and take it down to the east property line in this area here. Will connect to the southeast corner of Sky Point in this area. And then we would take that trail to go back up along this alignment here, which would connect into the current trail alignment that's already in existence. Staff is recommending approval of that. The other part of the special use permit is for the expansion for a theater facility, which is located on the northern part of our property that's located here. This is going to be filled for a theater that's being proposed. It's two levels. We are asking for a variance in parking also. The variances, we're going to be removing some parking spaces in this area and we're relocating some parking spaces down in this area in this bottom triangle as I mentioned to you earlier. One of the things I want to mention though about the parking reduction for the parking spaces, it's not so much about the parking for the variance for the school itself that is a concern, has been a concern and we've been working with your traffic department. It's the circulation on the property, how we deal with the pickup and drop-off of the students. One of the things with the expansion is we're going to be adding about 220 students to the school. So there is a condition, I believe it's condition number 18 on the site development plan that addresses the traffic impact analysis. It mentions, and I'm going to paraphrase, but on condition 18 that we need to get approval of the traffic impact analysis in order to be allowed to increase our student population on the property, which is totally fine with us. Your staff has been great to work with over all these years. We had Rick Schroeder, Mr. Norby has been out there. We've been working with the councilwoman out there and all the parents and trying to find ways to make sure we improve that circulation. So the increase in the approval of the application tonight is still subject to traffic impact analysis. And then even when that traffic impact analysis is approved, staff has put an additional condition on there that there is a condition for an administrative review within 60 days. And if there's any concerns or any changes we need to make, we'll con- concerns or any changes we need to make, we'll continue to work with staff at that point in time. But there is a double layer of conditions in this, to address this concern as far as the parking reduction. But again, it's not so much of losing parking spaces. The parking spaces, we have more than enough on the property. It's dealing to make sure we have enough circulation on the property, on and off, as we propose. The site development plan, we do have some waivers. One of the waivers is on the northern part of our building here, the theater, because it's where the back of house is. We do not have windows, or window in the back of that, which we think is fairly common when you're dealing with a theater. So we're asking for that waiver. Along the trail in this area here, as you can see, we want to keep everything symmetrical with the existing landscaping. So there was a reduction in that that we're requesting for. And then, one of the waivers along Sky Point, for the trail alignment, for the landscaping, we're going to withdraw that. That is no longer needed, because what we're going to do is, we have enough space in here, green space, we're going to find that extra five feet, so we're going to be able to comply to the multi, I believe it's a multi-trail use standard in that area. So that waiver would no longer be required. So in conclusion, with respect to what we're asking for, we're asking for the approval with, as I mentioned, withdrawal of that one waiver for the landscaping trail requirement along Sky Point. We believe that the conditions that are imposed in there give you adequate protection from any increase for student population on the property, and we're excited to add this type of curriculum with the theater on the property, which we think is very important for education, for education purposes for the school. I know we're going to be moving up to the City Council. We've also, just for notification, we've been working with the councilwoman's office. We're going to be having a meeting, we're going to schedule with the HOAs that are adjacent to us, to the north and to the east, somewhere between now and the City Council, to address any other concerns or things that might come up. So, that being said, I'm here to answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gronhour. This item has been noted for public comment, public hearing. If anybody is here that's a member of the public would like to be heard, please come down. Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing and pass it back to the commission, starting with myself for Ward 6. Thank you, Mr. Gronhour, for saying how important the arts are to education. My husband, the scenic designer, would be very excited to hear that, so. Okay, I wanted to ask you about condition 19, that says queues for the overall pickup and drop-off operations shall not extend into the public right-of-way. You've got a map that shows, your map shows that strip going up into Elkhorn, and so I would like to hear a little bit more about what your proposed stacking is, to address the existing queues into the public right-of-way along Elkhorn, which I've seen, and it's a lot. So just if you could talk a little bit about how you're planning on reducing that stack up onto Elkhorn?
Yes, one of the things that we're going to be doing is, we're going to be able to add more cars onto the property for queuing purposes, is as you can see here, currently we cannot queue in this area. So what happens is, you have, and I'm going to show you on the circulation plan, but just for purposes, so you can see here, this is a, the road area that we have, where you have access coming from Elkhorn into the property, and currently we have two ingress and egress areas out on the Sky Point, okay? So you see that. With the approval, the expansion here, we'll be adding another ingress and egress down in this area, which I'll show you on this plan. So this is for the elementary pickup and drop-off, okay? So what you'll have here, because for clarification, the elementary drop-off and pickup times are different bell times than the high school, middle school that we have. So you have two different periods of ingress and egress. So for the elementary, what you'll have is, they'll be coming in down this road here, which I showed you, the STEM road from the north, which they will be able to queue onto the property here, and they'll come around, and they'll be able to pick up or drop off the elementary students located here. With this addition of this property here, we have more queuing in this area. We're going to be able to bring cars on for pickup, but for drop-off, you can also come off of Sky Canyon and turn in here. So you'll have double row coming through here, which will come on out to Sky Point in there. So that's for the elementary that's planned. That is something that we're still going through in the traffic impact analysis with your staff, and that may change in the area, because there's some tweaks that I, even talking to consultants, that we may be able to make to keep more circulation on the property or queuing. This is an exhibit for the middle and high school. So again, this is the location where that STEM road is. The middle and high school drop-off and pickup is on this portion of the school. So what we will be doing here, the plans that we have submitted, is we have the queuing that will be coming in, and then we'll be coming around in this area. We've worked with the city to block this off during pickup and drop-offs. And you'll be able to circle around here, come into here, and then shoot back out onto Elkhorn, which is a new addition here, as I mentioned earlier, because this property here, we're going to be able to queue more cars on property here, coming in off of Sky Point. You're going to be able to come up along the east property line. You're going to have a pickup or drop-off in this area, and then you're going to be able to go back out onto Elkhorn. So we do believe by adding the additional three-plus acres of property down here, this gives us more room for circulation purposes, and by design here, we know there's other areas that we could, in working with your traffic department, add some more queuing onto the property with our traffic engineer.
Okay, thank you very much, and thanks for continuing to work with the neighbors and the HOAs in the surrounding area. So, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve item 25 and its related items for 25-0067-A through D. There's a motion on the floor. Oh, and Mr. Gronhour, you agree to all of staff conditions?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Motion on the floor, please cast your vote. Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Great, please post, and that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, that will be moving forward to the June 18th, 2025 City Council meeting.
Thank you. Okay, item 27, 25-0092-VAR, applicant-owner, the KFLT Financial Trust, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request, to allow a proposed solid front yard wall that does not conform to Town 19.06 Development Standards, for solid and overall wall height at 2331 Pinto Lane, Ward 1, Knutson. Staff recommends denial. May I have a staff report?
Yes, Madam Chair, no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, and that the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by constructing a front yard wall without permits, and that exceeds solid and overall wall height requirements. In view of the absence of any hardship imposed by the site's physical characteristics, it has concluded that the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature. Therefore, staff recommends denial of this variance request, subject to conditions of approved. Please note, additional letters of protest and support have been submitted since publication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir. If you could please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address, and tell us about the project.
Good evening, Your Honor. My name's John Shook, John J. W. G. N. Shook, S-H-O-K. I represent KFLT Financial Trust, the homeowners at 2331 Pinto Lane. We're proud, owners of this property, lived there for 20 years. We built this fence in conformity with other fences that are in the area. We have addressed, we've spoken with some folks, with your staff and the planning commission, and we understand our neighbors' concerns. We are willing to make accommodations to our neighbors to punch out additional, basically, segments of the fence, to conform with the 50% occlusion requirement. The height, we believe, should be varied. I believe it is consistent with other fencing in the area, and I believe that there is no objection to that at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. This item has been noted for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on this item? Come on down, sir. Good evening, sir. Please state and spell your name for the record, and give us your address.
My name is Mark Wolfson, M.A.R.K.W.O.L.F.S.O.N. I live down the block at 2709 Pinto Lane, and I don't understand why this commission would approve the request. The fence was put up without a permit. The fence was put up without a variance. The gentleman just said he owned the property for 20 years, so he should know the rules and the laws here. And I wonder whether the laws only apply to those people who actually follow them. Four years ago, I came before the same commission, and prior to coming here for a variance for my fence, I spoke to my local representative, and I was told, we don't care how tall you build your front fence. We care that it has visibility required for, I guess, the police, or whatever the reasons are. So my wife and I, who would have preferred to do exactly what this gentleman did, who, by the way, has a beautiful fence, I won't deny that, but we don't. We paid, we did the right thing. We got a, we went for a variance. We paid our $1,100. We got our permits. The permit office put us through hell. We had to use the same pile of assets by raising our fence. We had to get engineering studies to prove that they were strong enough to hold the gates. So people who do this without, through the proper process, seem to feel that, I've spent all this money, and now I'll come here and ask for forgiveness. I get it, but it's not right, it's not fair, and it's not equitable. Because four years ago, had Mr. Knutson told me, just do it, and then ask for forgiveness, you'll be fine, I wouldn't be standing here. But we didn't get what we wanted, because we weren't allowed to. That's my opinion. The rules should have, I haven't lived here for 20 years, but I did follow all the rules that I could figure out, and you shouldn't reward somebody, there seems to be no punishment if you do, that says, do what you want, don't tell anybody, if you get caught. And I'm only here because somebody put something in my mailbox saying the hearing was tonight. That's my opinion, and you guys, I guess you can do what you're going to do, but I don't think that this should be approved.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, John Randall, at 600 Campbell Drive, and this fence does not match any of the 1906 Development Standards. It's got to be a two-foot base with a three-foot above it, you know, I don't know how you would put it, slatting or easy to see-through. Commissioner Rogan and I have already been through this one time with another fence in the area, and it seems that it continues constantly. A fence that's solid, seven feet in our area, is a security risk. I know, everybody thinks their house is safe. I probably got the safest house in the whole neighborhood, and I wouldn't want a seven-foot solid fence in the front of my neighborhood. We have a lot of fence jumpers, which people never talk about. The police come here. You can look at the calls for service. The only house that they don't bother to ever see if the backyard is secured is mine, is because I have two Belgian Malinois in the back, and they consider it their yard, and they wouldn't let anybody come over to have a visit. But every other fence that I've seen, they all are allowed to see through, and a solid fence is just not good. I went by and saw this property. I don't know if the fence they have right now is compliant. It looks like it's taller than five feet, and there is very, very limited view to what they have now. So I would say that the, I would like to see the commission go ahead and just not approve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, I'll close public hearings. Sir, did you want to come and have any other?
So, just so my neighbors are clear, we are going to make it conform with the visibility requirements set by the ordinances. If we could have 180 days for that, we're going to have to punch those plates out. And I would just like to note, one of the reasons why we're doing this, is we had an attempted murder through a home invasion of my wife, because we did not have a fence, and they picked our house because it was the one that did not have a fence in front of it. So, I'll just put that out there.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, I will turn it back over to the commission, starting with Commissioner Rogan.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks to Mr. Shook for speaking to me today about this fence. Both Mr. Rando and Mr. Wolfson are correct that I've generally been agreeable to a six-foot wall height, as long as folks are committed to making the top portion of the fence 50% viewable, as required by code. I had that conversation with Mr. Shook today, and he's agreed to adjust the fence that he built, so that it is 50% viewable on that top portion of the fence. I just want to make it clear, though, that there is a slight grade variation on Mr. Shook's property. It runs, I think, west to east. There's about a foot-and-a-half grade variation that accounts for why the pilasters on his property are taller than normal, and read at, I think, seven-and-a-half feet or eight feet tall. And that's solely because of that grade change. The actual fence height overall is six-foot. So that's pretty consistent with what I've supported and approved in the past. So with that being said, I think Ms. Eddos has crafted a condition of approval, or two conditions of approval, that I'd like her to read into the record, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, through you, there are amended conditions. Condition of approval number one shall be edited to read. A variance is hereby approved to allow the existing 7.5-foot-tall pilasters with 1.5-foot-tall light fixtures, and an overall wall and fence combination consisting of a maximum 3.5-foot-tall solid wall base, with four feet tall steel fencing panels on top. The existing four-foot-tall steel fencing panels shall be either modified or replaced to depict 50% openness for visibility. There's also condition of approval number two, which shall be edited to read. The existed steel sliding vehicular gates shall be modified or replaced to depict 50% of openness for visibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Rogan, or would you like to, oh, sorry. Let me see if there's any other comments from the commissioners. Okay, seeing no other comments up here, Commissioner Rogan, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'd like to make a motion for approval of, sorry, I lost the agenda item. Agenda item 27, project number 25-0092-VAR1, subject to all of staff conditions and amended conditions read into the record this evening. And Mr. Shook, do you agree to those conditions?
Yes, Your Honor. Yes, come on.
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Shook.
There's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Okay, please post, and that motion carries.
Madam Chair, that is final action. I'll let us appeal to the clerk in 10 days.
Thank you. Item 28, 25-0103-VAR1, applicant St. James the Apostle Roman Catholic Church, owner, the Roman Catholic Bishop of Las Vegas, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request to allow a proposed 14-foot-tall freestanding sign with an animated LED display, where eight feet is the maximum height allowed, at 1920 North Martin Luther King Boulevard, Ward 5, Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends denial. May I please have the staff report?
Madam Chair, the applicant was granted a variance by the planning commission in December of 2023, for a six-foot-tall fence within the front yards, front yard setback area. The applicant is now stating the six-foot-tall fence would block the view of an eight-foot-tall freestanding sign, as permitted by Title 19, and is now requesting a variance for a 14-foot-tall freestanding sign with an animated LED digital display. As this is a self-imposed hardship, staff is recommending denial of the request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Please give us your names. Please state and spell your names, give us your addresses, and tell us about your project.
My name is Sandra Horton. I am H.O.R.T.O.N. I am the operations facilitator at St. James, and I have my contractor here.
Logan Tripp, L.O.G.A.N.T.R.I.P.P., 5280 North Chieftain Street.
We're here on a request for approval to install a sign at 1920 North Martin Luther King Boulevard, APN 13921701-007, known as the St. James Catholic Church. This is in accordance with the applicable signage ordinance. This request arises from recent improvement made to the property, specifically for the installation of a perimeter fence intended to enhance both safety and security for St. James, and for all individuals who attend the church, for worship, prayer, fellowship, religious education... religious education, and volunteering. The fence was installed in direct response to ongoing safety concerns and was implemented as a proactive measure to deter unauthorized access to the property. To protect the physical integrity of the premises, ensure the safety of all property, and establish clear and controlled access points, prior to the installation of the fence, the property was subject to illegal activities such as vandalism, drugs, prostitution, and homeless encampments. As a result of this necessary installation, the existing signage that identifies the church is now obstructed from public view. This has created a communication gap for those seeking to locate and identify the church. Therefore, we respectfully request approval to install a new clearly visible signage that will be installed by a licensed through Yesco and insured contractor while complying with any zoning visibility and design regulations.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on item 28 and pass it over to the commission, starting with Commissioner Munford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For, for planning, I have a question. The sign where it's proposed to be put, there's the, in terms of the distance from the closest residential, it's over 200 feet.
Madam Chair, through you. Yes, code requires a minimum distance separation of 200 feet between illuminated signage and residential zoned properties. And this, their site plan depicts about a 245-foot distance separation, so they would meet that requirement.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I, and this, this will be LED light?
Yes.
Okay. I, I really don't have any problem getting behind this, other than, you know, the residential to the, I believe that's to the south of it.
Yes.
Is, is farther than 200 feet. I think to the north of it is commercial.
Yes, Mario's.
Yeah, so I, I don't have any problem in backing this and motioning for approval. Does anybody on the, on the board have questions?
Chair, I have something to say.
Please, pretty, Commissioner Rogan.
I appreciate the position that the church is in, but, you know, it's in this position because it requested that that fence be built, and now based upon that fence being built, they're, they're asking for a variance in the, in the height. I'd be happy to support an LED illuminated sign that's compliant with code, but at 14 feet high, without any landscape buffer to the residential neighborhoods to the south, I really can't get behind this.
Okay, any other comments? All right, seeing none then. Commissioner Munford, if you wanna go ahead and make your motion.
Like I said before, I, I don't, like I said, I, I don't see any, if it's, if it's, if the distance is over 200 feet, I don't see any problem with that. I, I'd like the motion for, motion for approval. I'd like to make that motion subject to all conditions.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Rogan?
Nay.
Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Okay, please post. And that motion carries.
Madam Chair, that is final action, unless appealed to the clerk in 10 days.
Thank you.
I also have a letter to submit that was given from the archdiocese to support us.
Okay. Do you wanna just hand it to the clerk? So you've been approved?
Yes, thank you.
You're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. Okay. Item, item 29, 25-0109, applicant owner Gold L-T-R-E-L-L-C, number six, for possible action on the following land use entitlement project request on the east side of Rainbow Boulevard, approximately 605 feet south of Ann Road, Ward 6, Bruni. Staff recommends denial on the land use entitlement project. 29A is 25-0109-VAR1, to allow a 32-foot residential adjacency setback where 66 feet is required. 29B, 25-0109-VAR2, to allow 39 parking spaces where 44 parking spaces are required. 29C, which is 25-0109-SUP1, for proposed motor vehicle part sales, installation and repair use, motor vehicle repair minor. And then 29D, 25-0109-SDR1, for proposed one-story, 7,449-square-foot motor vehicle repair and 400-square-foot smog check development, with a waiver to allow bay doors to face the right-of-way where such is not allowed. May I have the staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. The proposed development is located within the Rainbow Boulevard North Corridor Plan, which emphasizes neighborhood-supporting land uses and walkability. Walkability is usually achieved by placing the building towards the street frontage with parking in the rear to create a visually interesting space for pedestrians. The applicant has proposed to setback the building by 82 feet with parking in the front yard. Additionally, the auto-oriented nature of the development further discourages accessibility to neighborhood-serving uses for residents living within walking distance of the corridor. Therefore, staff finds the applicant has proposed to overdevelop the subject site as evidenced by the requested variances, waiver, and exceptions of Title 19 requirements. As the proposed development also does not further the intent of either the Rainbow Boulevard North Corridor Plan or City of Las Vegas 2050 Master Plan, staff recommends denial of all requested entitlements subject to conditions if approved. Please note, additional letters of protest have been submitted since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. If you could please give us your name, state and spell your name, give us your address, and tell us about the project.
Good evening to all. Renee Rollin, R-E-N-E-R-O-L-I-N, with Mo Many Engineers representing the owner. The project is that the owner would like to bring auto service to the neighborhood. This, as you know, the property is zoned C1, and next door to it is already, I think, a street sweeping business, and then further next to that is a gas station. The other side of it is we are locked in by two sides of residential. So we've accommodated that with trees at 20 feet on center, some are 36-inch box, some are 24, alternating. And we've also pushed the building, keeping this building centered on the site, we've pushed the parking for the building to the opposite side, so it's nearest the commercial side, not the residential side. And I believe the gas station that's on the corner is about the same height as our building, too. If not, it's within a couple of feet, so.
Okay. This item has been noticed for a public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Thank you, sir, come on down.
Thank you, Madam Chair and commissioners. My name, for the record, is Anthony Brown. I live at 5511 Gemini Bridges. And as a homeowner whose residence backs up immediately to the east of the proposed site, I would like to request denial of the special use permit and waiver variance for item number C-250109. I'm here today with some other homeowners in the community, and so we just have too many concerns. We haven't had any conversation with Ms., Ms. Rollin or Mr. Gold about this project. So there are just too many concerns that we have, being homeowners, immediately affected. So I, I also have a petition I'd like to submit from some of the homeowners that couldn't be here tonight, also in opposition of this proposed site, so.
Okay. Who else is here with you? Do you guys, hi, okay. And, and you're all opposed as well. Okay, great, thanks. Any, is he speaking for everybody? Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, sir, are you coming down to?
Yes.
Come on. Again, if you wanna speak on an item, you can stand at the podium, there's three microphones, so you can all line up. Go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jesus A. Dogado, and I'm actually a resident of neighborhood of Timmer Creek. We've been, actually, lived in there for eight years now, and at 5504 Gemini Bridges, just behind where the, just behind where the proposed plan is. And I'm opposed to the item 29, just for the reason that we, you know, we decided to leave where we leave for the safety and environment of the neighborhood, you know, this neighborhood, and having a business that will bring lots of noise to a neighborhood due to power tools, compressors, towing trucks, since there's already a business that creates lots of noise, you know, it's the twister business. So it's been kinda, you know, hard to actually, you know, hear that, the noises, you know, throughout the day and night. So that's pretty much our concern.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else wanna speak on this? Okay, seeing no one else, I'll go ahead and close public hearing, and if you would like to come down and respond.
Okay, the first thing would be the hours. They are closed at 5:00 PM. It may be open at 7:00 or 8:00, but it would be closed by 5:00 PM. All of the work will be done inside the building, nothing on the exterior of the building. We can, I mean, I don't know that there's a problem with the height of it, although the building down the street was approved at that height. We could always lessen it a couple of feet, if that helps. We could also add more trees, or just make them all 36-inch boxes, if that helps the buffer on the, the back and the side neighbor, if that's a concern, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna turn this back to the commissions, and I'll start, since it's in Ward 6. I know we've talked about this project. I, I still have a level of discomfort with it being appropriate for the neighborhood. I, I think there's just a lot going on right here, and I just think that with that neighborhood backing up to you on the east, there's just not enough buffering. I know you said that the work will be done on the inside, but you also said that the bay doors would be open, so essentially.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, it would be done on the inside, but with open doors.
Exactly.
I'm gonna give you a couple of choices. I am actually prepared tonight to make a motion to deny. If you would like to do a neighborhood meeting and try to talk to these neighbors and see if there is any way to collaborate.
Okay.
We can do that, and we can obey it for 30 days. But I, I just don't find that this is harmonious and compatible, given the adjacency to the neighborhood and given how intense the use is on the lot. So that, that's, that's where I am, and that would be my motion, and I'll see if there's anybody else who has anything. Okay. So why don't we go ahead, and I'll make a motion to obey this for 30 days. I'm gonna expect you to do a neighborhood meeting, and please make sure that I'm included on that.
Absolutely.
And so, yeah, that'll be my motion. The motion on the floor is to continue for 30 days. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Okay, please post. All right, that motion carries, so we will look forward to a neighborhood meeting and see you in 30 days.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Since it's already zoned C1, is it more appropriate then to put a fast food on it that's possibly got, you know, hours from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and there's constant traffic and lights and things?
Why don't we have a neighborhood meeting, and we can talk about it?
Okay, I'm just, I'm just wondering, because the owner wants to change his idea.
Yeah, we'll make sure we're not saturating that corner with uses as well, so.
Okay, all right, great, thank you all.
Great, thanks, Renee. Can I get a show of hands real quickly to see who all is here on item 30 and 31? Okay, all right, so here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna try to knock out the rest of this agenda, and we're gonna trail 30 and 31. Sorry, thanks, guys, sorry. Okay, so item number 32, 25-0124-SDR, applicant owner Southwest Holding Company LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a major amendment to an approved plot plan review, Z0071-991, for the proposed addition of a one-story 16,877-square-foot commercial building to an existing shopping center with a waiver of perimeter landscape buffer requirements on the southeast corner of Craig Road and Tenaya Way, Ward 4, Alan Polinsky. Staff recommends approval. May I have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, staff has determined the proposed waivers and exceptions pertaining to perimeter landscape buffers and planning materials will have minimal negative impact to the adjacent multifamily development, which has existing mature perimeter landscape planning materials. Furthermore, staff finds the requested major amendment is consistent with the previously approved site design and building elevations within the existing development. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested major amendment. Please note, additional documents of protest were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Please state and spell your name for the record, give us your address, and tell us about the project.
Good evening. My name is Matt Huss. I'm with the ownership, Southwest Holding Company. My last name is spelled H-U-S-S, and our address is 8350 West Sahara Avenue, Suite 210, in Las Vegas, 89117. This is a piece of an existing shopping center that we developed many years ago, and this is the very last parcel to be, that we're proposing to build out. It offers cross-access to the existing center, which in turn provides connectivity to Craig, and from there to the, the 95. We are planning uses that are consistent with the existing zoning that's in place today. I know there have been some concerns about the, the landscape, particularly from the south to the north, where the majority of the parking is located. So we have proposed six, or it could be considered seven, mesquite, Colorado mesquite trees that are 36-inch box, and we're excited for the project and are open to any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment, and I will pass it back over to the commission, starting with Commissioner Kasama.
Thank you, Chair, for reviewing them, and also I think that you've also done your due diligence and have worked out a compromise on the landscaping. I approve, since I do find it forms a great work on the landscaping issue. But unless there are any comments, then I am happy to make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kasama. And, Mr. Haf, are those, real quick question for me, thank you for working with me on the landscaping, is, are those trees gonna be 36-inch box trees?
Yes, that's what we are proposing.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else on the commission have any questions? No, okay. Commissioner Kasama, did you wanna make your motion?
Yes, without a doubt, I am happy to make a motion to approve item 32, 25-124-SUP1, subject to staff's conditions.
And, sorry, quickly, Ms. Etoz, do we need to add a condition that they will increase the number of trees?
Madam Chair, we can add a condition to the SDR that will read, "All trees shall be 36-inch box-sized trees."
Okay, but as far as the count of the trees, since it was not on the, it was not easily identifiable on the original design, and, and the applicant is represented, they're going to include an additional six to seven trees, does that need to be somewhere in a condition?
Madam Chair, this is scheduled to go to city council, so we can look at that between now and city council.
Okay.
And work with the applicant to get those trees. Code does require one every 20 linear feet, and we can work with them to get that on the record.
Okay, that, that's great. So then you agree to all of staff's conditions, including the added condition tonight?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and that was a yes?
That's a yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, please cast your votes. Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kasama? Okay, please post. And that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, Madam Chair, that'll be moving forward to the June 18th, 2025 city council meeting.
Thank you. Item 33, 25-0109, applicant owner Gold L-T-R-E-L-L-C, number six, for possible action on the following Item 33, 25-0130-SDR1, applicant Prospect Street, owner Deer Springs Land LLC. For possible action on a land use entitlement project, request for a proposed two-story, 34,100-square-foot medical office building and 900-square-foot restaurant with drive-through with waivers of the Town Center Development Standards Manual at the southwest corner of Deer Springs Way and Riley Street, Ward 4, Alan Polanski staff recommends approval. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, the subject site is an infill parcel that is appropriate for office and retail development. The proposed development plan is compatible with the existing suburban-style pattern of development that surrounds the site. Staff therefore recommends approval of the site development plan review, subject to conditions. Please note additional letters of protest and support were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir. If you could please state and spell your name for the record and give us your address and tell us about the project.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the record, John Curran, 10801 West Charleston, Suite 170, here on behalf of the applicant and the owner. Pleased to present a site development review tonight for this 3.27-acre parcel on Deer Springs, just east of Durango, right across the street from Centennial Hills Hospital. We intend to record a survey and parcel off the westernmost, .6 acres, and sell to another proven operator here in town. They'll build a 900-square-foot drive-through establishment. They will sell milkshakes. It's a founder of Nothing Blunt Cakes, but a new concept to town, so something to get excited about in this part of town. We will then develop the balance of the site into a two-story, 34,200-square-foot medical office condo project. Nice, clean, modern design, not asking for any waivers or variances. It's a nice, nice project that's been well-received by the marketplace and given medical providers the opportunity to own medical office condos here. Did have the chance to speak with some members of the commission to talk over the project. I'd like to present our landscape plan. We meet code in all instances and exceed code in some cases, but we can commit to offering 36-inch box trees along Deer Springs, that's these 19 trees, along Deer Springs Boulevard. With that, respectfully request you follow staff's recommendation for approval and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment and pass it back to the commission, starting with Commissioner Kasama.
Thank you, Chair, regarding item 33, I am happy to follow with staff's recommendation of approval unless there are any other comments from the commission.
Thank you, Commissioner. Quickly, do we need to add that as a condition on the 36-inch box trees? Ms. Eddos?
Yes, we, Madam Chair, through you, yes, we can add that condition as well, that all trees shall be 36-inch box-sized trees.
That's, to clarify, that's the nine...
Just on Deer Springs frontage?
Yeah.
Yeah, just for...
I'm sorry, for the, just the street frontage?
Correct.
The 19 trees along Deer Springs.
Okay, then that condition would read, "The landscape buffer trees along Deer Springs shall be 36-inch box-sized trees."
Thank you very much, Ms. Eddos. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Curran, really looking forward to this project, because we're getting on that Durango corridor, since I'm just north of Ward 4, and that's like most of my commercial stuff is on Durango. Excited that we're getting to the last few bits of infill, and I think this is going to be a really great project, so Commissioner Kasama, would you like to make your motion?
Thank you, Chair. With that, I'm happy to approve item 35-130 SDR1, subject to...
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve item 25-0130 SDR, subject to all staff conditions and amended conditions stated tonight, and you agree to all those conditions, Mr. Curran?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Rogan.
Aye.
Commissioner Kasama.
Aye.
And Commissioner Schlotman, your vote is not showing up.
That is nigh.
Okay, thank you, sir. Please post, and that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that is final action, and let's appeal to the clerk in 10 days.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, item 35, 25-0133 SDR1, applicant Pacific Palisades Capital Investments LLC, owner Sticky8 LLC. For possible action on a land use entitlement project, request for a proposed parking lot reconfiguration and the addition of a patio cover, walls, and fencing with waivers of Appendix F interim downtown Las Vegas Development Standards at 1421 South Commerce Street, Ward 3 Diaz, staff recommends approval. May I have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just want to go ahead and make a disclosure that I'm under contract with the applicant, and I have ongoing business relationship with the owner of this property, so I'll be abstaining on this matter.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, the proposed changes to this site include a parking lot reconfiguration, ADA accessibility upgrades, and a proposed patio cover that is intended to serve as an unloading area to receive guests to the restaurant. The proposed front yard fencing, while exceeding maximum height requirements, is transparent-facing towards Commerce Street to avoid creating a claustrophobic pedestrian environment. As the proposed amendments further the goals as expressed in the Vision 2045 Downtown Las Vegas Master Plan, staff recommends approval of the site development plan review, subject to conditions. Please note additional letters of support were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. If you could please state and spell your names for the record, give us your addresses, and tell us about the project.
Carly Mossman, good evening. C-A-R-L-Y-M-O-S-S-M-A-N, address is 9345 West Sunset Road, Suite 101.
Judy Ann Bucker, J-U-D-R-I-W-A-N, Baker with double K, and I am the founder of Sublimotion. It's an immersive dinner experience that's already existing for 10 years on Ibiza in Spain, created by the famous chef Paco Ronchero, and together with the team on Ibiza, we're going to bring this to the Arts District.
It's a really special project, so the arrival experience of what this is proposed for the site development requirements is going to actually begin off-site, where guests will be picked up in a luxury vehicle. They will be brought to the site via access through the alleyway and dropped off underneath the covered patio that is proposed here. Then the cars will exit out onto Commerce Street. There are two dinner seatings per night, 12 guests per seating, and this is, there are no walk-ins for this, these tickets are purchased ahead of time. There are other improvements to the site. This building was actually built in 1948, and so we are doing a lot of improvements for ADA accessibility, providing a new accessible parking connection to the public realm, adding manned gates as well, that are consistent with the path of travel required. We're also adding proposed landscaping along the south perimeter and proposed trees to help reduce the urban heat island effect. We respectfully request a waiver for a nine-foot-high perimeter wall that would extend from the front of the property all the way around to the south, along the south and west or east sides. And the fencing for this will be a very elegant vertical louver ironed fence at the front along Commerce and also along the alleyway, and there will be complete porous visibility between these areas. Along, between the properties, we are proposing a solid CMU wall, where we do see the condition of having the finish of having a 20% contrasting finish along there, which we agree to do. And the overall site improvements will also be included for the exterior facade, a proposed hand-traveled mural finish that will emulate a sand dunes and, and really kind of beautify and harmonize the overall building within the Arts District area. I will open it up for questions now.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed, I'm sorry, this item has been noticed for public comment or for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to make comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and pass it back to the commission. Does anyone have any comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm prepared to make a motion to follow staff's recommendation of approval. So, is there a motion on the floor for approval of item 35? Please cast your votes. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Thank you, please post, and that motion carries. And you agree to any and all of staff's conditions?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you so much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, item...
Madam Chair, that is final action, and let's appeal to the clerk in 10 days.
Sorry, Mr. S... Okay. Item 36, 25-0149, applicant owner Biggs Construction, Inc. For possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests at 5313 Redberry Street, Ward 5, Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends denial on the land use entitlement project 36A, which is 25-0149-VAR1, to allow five parking spaces where eight are required. At the 36B, 25-0149-SDR1, for a proposed two-story, four-unit multifamily residential development with waivers of the perimeter landscape buffer requirements. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair, while additional housing is need, is a needed priority within the city of Las Vegas, staff is unable to support this project due to the associated parking variance. Therefore, staff recommends denial of all requested entitlements, and please note additional documents of protest were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen, if you could please state and spell your names for the record, give us your address, and tell us about the project.
Good evening, my name is Majid Khatir, K-H-A-T-E-R, 050 East Serene Avenue, 89123. I am the architect, helping Mr. Biggs.
My name is Michael Biggs, B-A-G, 5220 Portrait Place, Las Vegas, Nevada. Your Honor, this is not the new project. It has been submitted before, approved before, and while we are going through the Building Department, City of Building, this variance was expired. My plan has been submitted to the city. It was almost approved, when this is expired. And we're really trying to improve the neighborhood. There's only lot is vacant on the 10, fourplex lot up there, and every three weeks I have to go clean the lot, people throwing the beer bottle, everything else there. So really, it will enhance the neighborhood, and it's a, it's a good project to be in the neighborhood. And basically, everything was approved by the city, except last minute, the variance was expired, and they asked me to go get some kind of extension to it. Thank you, if you want to say anything.
No, I mean, this was approved the first time in June 2021, and I think the civil improvement plans, we have to add sprinkler system to this, so we have to, to upgrade our water lines and go through all that civil improvement, which took a little bit of time. I know it shouldn't take us four years, but I think he forgot that we needed to file for extension of time while he's busy with the building permit. Once the Building Department approved the plans, they said, "Oh, by the way, your land use entitlement has expired, and that's why we are here." Now, as far as the parking, if you look at the whole neighborhood, there is no one lot over there can accommodate eight or nine parking spaces onsite. So we did what we can to match the existing properties, and that's all what we're asking for here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This item has been noticed for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and pass it back to the commission, starting with Commissioner Munford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the parking will be on the backside towards the alley?
Yes.
To the south? Now, is the parking, are you going to, is there going to be walls separating yourself from the other parking lots in the back? Because I notice from aerial view, there's, yeah, there's parking in the back for the other properties. You're not segregating your parking from the other properties, or, not that it's important, I'm just wondering?
No, because there is none, like, if you look at the back, it's all kind of open. But we are adding a trash enclosure that nobody else have that, so we're building it into to one side, so that will isolate the one side.
Okay, but I notice, I notice too, there's parking allowed on that street to the front, to the north of, of your project. Or there's, I see there's people that park on the street to the north of where you're building.
Yes, because I don't think any of those buildings can accommodate eight parking spaces onsite, so that's, that's a fact. If you look at the place, you would see it.
Okay. All right. If, you know, for the parking, you know, it seems like in this area, and mostly these units around here, they're fourplexes like yours, correct?
Yes, yeah.
And it looks like those have been approved in the past.
Yes.
So, I mean, I don't see the parking issue as something that should hold up your project. Like you're saying, I think we need more, you know, we need more units, you know, developed in this area for, for housing. It's already something that's, that's going to be, you know, it kind of goes in contrast with what's going, being developed in that area, or that's already existing in that area for a new development. So I'd, I'd move for, for approval, per, you know, subject to all the conditions with planning.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else have comments from the commission or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and please make your motion, Commissioner Munford.
Thank you, Madam. Yeah, I'd move for approval for item 25-10, is that the right one? That's round 34. 36, sorry. For item 25-0149, I move to approve, approve this per conditions of plan.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Can you please...
Aye.
Got it. Commissioner Munford? Okay, great, please post, and that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, and you understand that that is subject to all staff conditions.
Thank you so much, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for moving us forward.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Madam Chair, that'll be moving forward to the June 18th city council meeting.
Thank you very much. Okay, and at this time, we are going to take a five-minute break. Okay, let's come back on the record and let's go to item 30, 25-0110, applicant Jackson Hotel LV LLC. Owner, Jackson Hotel LV LLC et al., for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests, the northwest corner of Jackson Avenue and F Street, Ward 5, Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends denial on the land use entitlement project. And actually, before I finish reading the item into the agenda, Mr. Radilla, are we able to consolidate 30 and 31 since they are related? Can we call them both up?
Yes, they can be called at the same time, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So that's what we're going to do. We're going to do 30 and 31 all as one hearing. 30A, 25-0110-ZON1, from T4MS, T4 Main Street, to TSMSTS, Main Street. 30B, 25-0110-VAR1, to allow 24 stories where seven stories is the maximum allowed. 30C, 25-0110-SUP1, for proposed 361-foot tall building within the 140-foot Airport Overlay District. 30D, 25-0110-SUP2, for proposed 548-square-foot massage establishment use with waivers to allow a 99-foot distance separation from a church, house of worship, 187-foot distance separation from a city park, and a 244-foot distance separation from a parcel zone for residential use where 400 feet is required. 30E, 25-0110-VAC1, petition to vacate a public alleyway south of Amberan Avenue between F Street and G Street. 30F, 25-0110-SDR1, for proposed 24-story mixed-use development consisting of 60 multifamily residential units and 207 hotel rooms with waivers of the Title 19.09 Form-Based Code Development Standards. Item 31, 25-0111, applicant West Side Residence LV LLC. Owner, the House of God, which is the Church of the Living God, the pillar and ground of the truth without controversy, Inc., et al., for possible action on the following land use entitlement project requests, at the southeast corner of Amberan Avenue and G Street, Ward 5, Summers Armstrong. Staff recommends denial on the land use entitlement project. 31A, 25-0111-ZON1, from T4-N, T4 Neighborhood, to T5-MS, T5 Main Street. 31B, 25-0111-VAR1, to allow 21 stories where seven stories is the maximum allowed. 31C, 25-0111-SUP1, for a proposed 342-foot tall building within the 140-foot Airport Overlay District. 31D, 25-0111-SDR1, for a proposed 21-story mixed-use development consisting of 256 multifamily residential units and 1,752 square feet of commercial space with waivers of the Title 19.09 Form-Based Code Development Standards. May we please have the staff report?
Yes, Madam Chair. The proposed development consists of two separate applications for the southern half of the proposed development. In order to accommodate the large scale of the proposed development, the applicant is requesting to rezone the property, which would result in spot zoning. A special use permit to exceed the airport overlay of variance to allow 22 stories where seven is the maximum allowed, and multiple waivers for setbacks, lock coverage, to allow zero parking and no amenity zone along G Street, F Street, and Jackson Avenue. Related requests are also proposed for the northern half of the proposed development. Similarly, the applicant's request to rezone the northern half of the proposed development would result in spot zoning, while a special use permit to exceed the airport overlay, variance to allow 21 stories where seven is the maximum allowed, and multiple waivers for setbacks and parking requirements are requests that staff cannot support as these are self-imposed hardships in preferential nature. As the proposed development does not support the 100 Plan, the Vision 245 Downtown Las Vegas Master Plan for the historic West Side, Northwest Las Vegas Plan, staff finds the proposed development is not compatible with the surrounding area and recommends denial of all applications. Please note, additional letters of protest and support were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, folks. Thank you for hanging in there with us. If you could each please state and spell your name for the record. Give us your addresses and then you can tell us about the project.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Cato, 2755, well, Joe Cato, C-A-T-O, last name, 2755 East Deserting Road. And I'm here with my colleagues.
My name is Brianna Lucier, B-R-E-A-N-N-A-L-U-C-I-E-R. And I am the project manager for the project.
My name's Kevin Thistle, K-E-V-I-N-T-H-I-S-T-L-E, architect here, representing the owner.
Thank you. We're here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Mary, and his affiliate entities, Jackson Hill, Jackson Street, LV LLC, and West Side Residence. Thank you, staff, for combining two applications at the same time. The subject site consists of five parcels totaling approximately 0.97 acres, located at the subject northwest corner of Jackson Avenue and F Street. The site is currently zoned, T4MS, T4, North, T4, Main Street, and the home of the former Tokyo Tavern, also known as Newtown Tavern, a legal, non-conforming, non-restricted gaming establishment. Since 2014, we, December 2014, we, this body gave us an extension. And our clients have been working on this project over the time.
Thank you so much. So specifically for the ten percent of net operating income that we would like to give back to the community, sorry. Specifically for the ten percent that we would like to give back to the community, we would like to propose that there be a community benefit agreement between us as the developer and the city, stating exactly what we plan to do, stating about the cultural advisory board with a set of bylaws for that board, stating what percentages of that ten percent we expect to go to housing and redevelopment, to scholarships, to, to faith-based and nonprofit organizations, and local small, medium-sized businesses. So what we would like to do is draft with the city an agreeable document that will record with the land, so in the event that an opportunity zone investor does come and want to buy the whole thing, it's recorded in this approval.
Okay, and I'm sorry, ma'am, can you please just state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, sorry, Brianna Lucier, B R E A N N A L U C I E R.
Thank you very much.
And, and we have submitted our outline for the record.
The voluntary?
The voluntary, yes, and also for the financing, would like to submit this as well. To ensure that the project is fully aligned with the city, our client, not just, he prioritized reaching out to the community. And we had our community meeting, as I mentioned before, but not only that, we met with stakeholders in the community. We met with residents that are directly impacted by the commu-, by the, by the build-out, those that are within a two or three mile ranges of the project. So we made it our own that we met with these people. We met with business owners. We met with stakeholders. We met with affinity groups to get their support of the project. Of course, we've met with residents that have asked for, what's the benefit of them supporting the project? And that gave us the opportunity to talk about our benefit plan, which has been accepted by the community. And when we did that, we just want to make sure that West Las Vegas is a community that is moving forward with Ward six, with downtown. When we look at over at the Smith Center, we see all the development that is happening over there, and then you look at West Las Vegas and nothing is happening over there. So this product, it's time, our client believes it's time, that we look at a project that is aligned with the goals of the city.
Right.
For growth. My apologies. That startled me, sorry. Okay, and so I just want, I'm gonna have our architect go over, we're gonna ask this body to approve the application, and we're gonna have our architect go over some of the drawings, and then we'll circle back before we hear from, let me answer your questions.
Hello, my name's again Kevin Thistle. I'm the architect on the project, and I'm here to go over a little bit of the history of the project and also go through the details of the project. As was stated earlier, the project is located at the corner of Jackson Avenue and F Street. We have Jackson Avenue on the south, F Street on the east, Van Buren on the north, and G Street on the west side. The project has also stated is divided into two parcels. The north parcel here, which is we're calling the West Side Residence, and the south side of the project is the Jackson Hotel and Harlem Knights Casino. This project is, this property actually is very unique, has a very great history, and has a lot of interesting aspects to it. As far as the history goes, back in nineteen fifty-five, a man by the name of Earl Turman opened up what was called the Newtown Tavern. It was located on two parcels of land. It was the one at six hundred Jackson, which is directly on the corner of Jackson and F Street, and it also had the adjacent parcel right next to it. Included in that, included in that business included a casino, and included a restaurant and a showroom. Fifteen years ago, Mr. Muri was able to purchase that property, six hundred and six oh six Jackson Avenue. Two and a half years later, well, in the last two and a half years, he managed to acquire the rest of the properties on the entire block. When Mr. Muri purchased the project fifteen years ago, this is a map that shows what the zoning was at that time. The project, property is here that is circled. The properties that are in red were zoned C two. At that time, C two zoning, you could build any type of commercial project on that site, and there was an unlimited height allowed. On October nineteenth of two thousand and eighteen, the City of Las Vegas adopted what's called the Form Based Code. And on May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, the City of Las Vegas changed the zoning on this property to comply with the new Form Based Code. So the property that was previously zoned C two was changed to T four N for the north parcel and T four M S for the south parcel. This property, as I said, has a great history. One thing that makes this property very unique from any other property in the Historic West Side or even in Las Vegas is that it carries with it what's called a grandfathered non-restricted gaming license, and that applies only to the seven thousand square foot parcel right on the corner of Jackson and F Street. You might ask, what is a non-restricted gaming use, and why is that important? It's important because if you wanted to build a casino, any place in the Historic West Side, there's a requirement by the state of Nevada that, where you cannot apply for a waiver, you cannot apply for a variance, and you have to maintain a fifteen hundred foot separation between any church, school, and the casino. So it's virtually impossible to build a casino in the Historic West Side without purchasing the entire Historic West Side as one piece. There's also a regulation, when you have a casino, if you want to have, serve liquor throughout the facility, there's a state and local regulation that requires you to build two hundred hotel rooms. It's impossible to build two hundred hotel rooms on this site in a seven-story building. It just doesn't work. It doesn't fit. With regards to what was mentioned previously, with regards to the Hundred Plan, back in two thousand and sixteen, the City of Las Vegas, along with UNLV, joined together and worked with the stakeholders and the neighbors, the residents in the Historic West Side. They worked for many years working on a plan to revitalize the Historic West Side. Eventually, they finally came up with what is referred to as the Hundred Plan, which was mentioned previously. That Hundred Plan, that Hundred Plan listed eight big moves that could help revitalize the Historic West Side. Those big moves were this. I know previously they said, we're not complying with the Hundred Plan, but I'm gonna go over the items where we are complying with the Hundred Plan. The first one, item was to revitalize Jackson Street, to build a catalyst project, to build a catalyst project on Jackson Avenue at D or F Street that will bring neighborhood activity and local, and the local economy back to Jackson Avenue. This is what we're proposing for that catalyst project. The second item on the Hundred Plan recommendation was vacant no more, and that was to provide, to do projects that were infill projects where you weren't replacing, removing people from their homes and moving them to other places in order to build new projects. This particular site has no residents living on it at this time, so no one would be relocated because of this project being built. The Hundred Plan recommended to build a project that would be a landmark destination. Again, we believe that this would be that landmark destination. The Hundred Plan recommended building a boutique hotel. We're proposing a two hundred and seven room hotel that would comply with both the local and state requirements for the two hundred rooms. Those two hundred and seven rooms are indicated here on this rendering. The Hundred Plan recommended building a mixed-use building. This indeed is a mixed-use project. It has both residential, multifamily residential, and commercial uses in it. The Hundred Plan recommended building multifamily residential buildings. We have two things here. We have, on the top floors here, we have sixty condominium units, and on the Van Buren side, we have three hundred and thirty-six apartment units. The Hundred Plan recommended building a neighborhood coffee shops. We have a coffee shop that we're proposing at the corner of Van Buren and F Street. The Hundred Plan recommended providing public parking facility. We're proposing an eight-level parking garage with four hundred and seventy-nine parking spaces. The Hundred Plan recommended providing small music venues. In this area here, we're providing, proposing an eight hundred and thirty-eights Performing Arts Theater, and on the seventh floor here, we're proposing a seven thousand square foot nightclub. I'm gonna go over with you now some of the details of, of the building itself, and I'm gonna start with the Jackson side first. Along Jackson Avenue, we have our driveway entrance coming in off of Jackson and exiting onto G Street. The hotel entrance is here, going into the hotel lobby. Adjacent to the hotel lobby, we have a five thousand square foot restaurant, which leads into the casino, and the casino, as I'm showing, is on that footprint that is required by the state. We cannot go beyond that footprint. We have to maintain all, any casino gaming operations within that seven thousand square foot footprint, and we're allowed to go another three thousand five hundred square feet directly above that, as far as casino expansion goes. Sorry about that. So above the hotel lobby, we have the eight hundred and thirty-eight seat Performing Arts Center. Above the casino here on the second floor, we have the expansion of the three thousand five hundred square foot casino and some lounge space. On the third floor above this space, we have a, we're proposing a wedding and banquet area. On the fourth level, we're proposing a ten thousand five hundred square foot food court, which is indicated. This is first, this is the casino, an interior rendering of the casino. Again, above, we have a ten thousand five hundred square foot food court. On level five, we have a seven thousand square foot barber shop and beauty salon, shown here. On level six, we have a six thousand square foot, twelve thousand six hundred square foot convention space and a seven thousand square foot gym, and that is where those two massage rooms are located. On level five, we also have a twelve thousand five hundred square foot convention space in addition to that barber shop. Above the casino here, on level seven, we have the seven thousand square foot exclusive nightclub with views to the Las Vegas skyline. Levels eight through sixteen is where we have the hotel rooms. And on the roof above the casino area here, we have a rooftop pool indicated here. I'm gonna talk for a minute now about the north portion of the property. The Van Buren Avenue is where the West Side Residence is. On the West Side Residence, we have the entrance to the, to the apartment lobby, elevator lobby in this corner. This is the access for the parking garage. This is access to the basement parking for valley parking. This is where we have the ground floor coffee shop. As far as services go, trash deliveries, that type of thing, they're coming in off of F Street. All the services are in the middle of the building, so they're screened from any of the adjacent neighbors. The trucks exit out, exit out on G Street. This is a view of the building from the Van Buren Street side, this being Van Buren Street. This is where the entrance to the apartment lobby is. This is where we have the gate-level parking garage, and above that is where we have the thirty, three hundred and thirty-six apartment units. And on top of this is where we have a rooftop pool for the apartments. There's been some concern with regards to privacy for the neighbors. They're located in the residences located north of the project on the opposite side of Van Buren. This is where our West Side residences would be. These are the ten properties where there's a potential concern for views and privacy. We did an analysis showing a person being inside of any of the apartment units, all the way from the ninth floor all the way up, we're providing a balcony, which actually creates a screen, so you can't look down through the floor at the adjacent neighbors. On level five, we have a 7,000-square-foot barber shop and beauty salon shown here. On level six, we have a 6,000-square-foot, 12,600-square-foot convention space and a 7,000-square-foot gym. And that is where those two massage rooms are located. On level five, we also have a 12,500-square-foot convention space in addition to that barber Above the casino here. On level seven, we have the 7,000-square-foot exclusive nightclub with views to the Las Vegas skyline. Levels eight through 16 is where we have the hotel rooms. And on the roof above the casino area here, we have a rooftop pool indicated here. I'm going to talk for a minute now about the north portion of the property. The Van Buren Avenue is where the West Side residence is. On the West Side residence, we have the entrance to the apartment lobby, elevator lobby in this corner. This is the access for the parking garage. This is access to the basement parking for valley parking. This is where we have the ground floor coffee shop. As far as services go, trash deliveries, that type of thing, they're coming in off of F Street. All the services are in the middle of the building, so they're screened from any adjacent neighbors. The trucks exit out, exit out on G Street. This is a view of the building from the Van Buren Street side, this being Van Buren Street. This is where the entrance to the apartment lobby is. This is where we have the gate-level parking garage. And above that is where we have the 336 apartment units. And on top of this is where we have a rooftop pool for the apartments. There's been some concern with regards to privacy for the neighbors. They're located in the residences located north of the project on the opposite side of Van Buren. This is where our West Side residences would be. These are the 10 properties where there's a potential concern for views and privacy. We did an analysis showing a person being inside of any of the apartment units, all the way from the ninth floor all the way up. We're providing a balcony, which actually creates a screen, so you can't look down through the floor at the adjacent neighbors. The balcony itself, the guardrail on the balcony is opaque glass, so you cannot see through that. So if you're standing inside the unit or sitting inside the unit, your line of vision is not anywhere for any, on any of these lots. I will say that if someone goes out to the balcony and stands on the balcony and looks over the edge, yes, they could look down and see whatever. I just want to say that in conclusion, we believe that this project will be the catalyst for the revitalization of Jackson Avenue and for the entire West Side. We believe that this project will be a landmark destination for those people seeking a unique Las Vegas experience. And this project will produce many job opportunities and business opportunities for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. To reiterate, our workforce, we're working, that makes me sure that our workforce is pulled from the community. Sorry, if you want to take that, sorry. Our workforce is pulled from the community. We're looking to partner with businesses within the community that would like to partner with us to have the food court, the massage spa, the gym that's there. We're looking at getting diverse operators for the casino. And so we're in talks with different entities right now. So we're doing the work. And we strongly believe that this project is in fact the anchor project that is, that will propel the historic West Las Vegas to invite other investors to come in who wants to develop in the area that is aligned with the 100 Plan in the area. We have a CSN is putting in a community college there, a live-work college there. And so the area is growing, but it's not growing fast enough where economic development can assist the people that are living in the community. And with that, I will pause and allow the speakers that are here to speak. And then we'll come back, we'll answer your questions, and then we'll add some more points. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cato. Okay. This item has been noticed for public hearing, but I want to be a little organized about this. So who here wants to speak on this item? Can I see, show hands? Okay. Who here is opposed to this item, is going to be speaking in opposition? All right. Who here is supporting it? Okay. So, wow. All right. Then I guess what we'll do is just, you guys come on down, line up on the microphones. I want to see three people at these mics the whole time. And we're going to give you each two minutes. Please don't be redundant. Please listen to your colleagues. And you can say ditto so that we can try to move forward on this. But yeah, everybody come down here and just populate microphones and just move in. So, sir, if you want to, please go ahead and start. State your name and give us your address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Nathaniel Door. I live at 920 Ortega Hill Lane here in Las Vegas. Sir, can you hear okay?
No, I think, yeah, shut the other microphones off. So just another complicated instruction. Yeah. So stand at the microphones, but don't turn the microphones on. Sir, on the right, it's just a little button that says "mic." And thank you very much for the help. Okay. And yours is back on now in the middle. All right. We'll get this.
All right. I'll continue. I want to thank the Commission for having this hearing on this. And I believe, as a resident of Las Vegas, the West Side has been underdeveloped and underserved. The history of that region and its impact that it's had on Vegas and its growth and it becoming the town that we all love, I don't think that should be, how do I put this? A bookend on the end of a very vital, or what once was a very vital area of our community. I believe that this project represents an astounding and novel and progressive approach to development in that area, increasing in jobs, increasing in opportunities, addressing, you know, affordable housing as well. You know, in 28 years of construction, I have never seen a developer that took so much initiative to develop an equitable solution for the community that development was going in. And I believe that all of us as Las Vegas residents can definitely appreciate and respect that. And with that, I will yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Chandler Cooks, C-H-A-N-D-L-E-R-C-O-O-K-S. I come before you as a property owner on Jackson Street, a community advocate, a supporter of this proposal, but ultimately as someone who believes in the brilliance and the brilliance of the West Side and those who have lived there for generations, including my family. I support this initiative because I see the potential for more than just buildings. I see the opportunity for jobs that pay a living wage, businesses owned by the people who live here, and housing that is affordable without being substandard. Also for preserving our history while building a future that our community can be proud of. I want to commend the project team for their efforts in including the community into this project planning. I know firsthand how challenging it can be to rally this community. So kudos to them for those efforts. This is a moment to really transform an area neglected by history into a model for what restorative, inclusive, and visionary development looks like. So I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving to the right, my right. Thank you, sir.
My name is Raymond L. Pastor, Raymond L. Giddens, G-I-D-D-E-N-S. I've lived in Las Vegas for the past, going on 25 years now. And as a local pastor here in Las Vegas, Nevada, the majority of my time has been spent on the historical West Side. So much so that I'm trying to develop property on the West Side. I live on the East Side, but I have property on the West Side. And I do want to die on the West Side, not the East Side. But that's God's doing. I have nothing to do with it. But the 24 years, almost 25 years that I've lived here, and like I say, I've been on the West Side almost every day. I've seen no real change. I mean, the community has just left, been left behind. And you look at the Smith Center, I think it was mentioned already, all the, that's Ward Five. All that growth and building that's going on, even a hotel that's going on there. And why not the West Side? It's time. 20 something years. The only thing that I've seen built on the West Side is up and down Martin Luther King Boulevard. All commercial. All commercial property, with the exception of First AME Church. There's a housing complex that was put in there. I know that they're working on something in remembrance of the late Pastor Bennett that they're going to put up. But I understand how the Southern Nevada Housing Authority is going to come through Marble Manor and all that's going to be replaced. So with all these other developments that's going on and everything, the West Side is going to be a wonderful place to live. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's move to the far left. Turn your mic on. Yep, there you go.
Good evening, Council of Planning Commission. My name is Leonard Martin, E-L-E-O-N-A-R-D-M-A-R-T-I-N. I live at 623 Harrison Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada 89106. I am a stakeholder. I'm speaking in regards to two entities today. I speak to you as a resident over 22 years, living on the historic West Side, within 300 feet of this proposed development. I speak to you as a member of the Historic West Side Community Association in revitalization and coherence with the city of Las Vegas. First and foremost, I agree with you guys on denying this project for the simple fact that the matter is COVID changed everything. Whenever UNLV got together and looked over the 100 Plan, that's changed. We have incubator system, we have an incubator department for the Historic West Side 100 Plan for the community and anybody who want to invest in it at the school on D in Washington. I would furthermore ask them to come to the community, and we have our meets down there with, we have the smartest brains at the University of Las Vegas University that can tell us what's economically developed, vital for our community. A casino ain't it. Downtown casino owners, strip owners ain't along with this, first and foremost. You understand? They not with it. They don't want to split the money. They losing money right now. We have two of the biggest companies, one of the biggest companies, Station Casinos, divert their properties for housing. If that's not telling you something in our community, then what is? I'm along with you guys on, this is not a race. We need to have a slow pace and find out exactly what's going to vitalize our community and get the neighbors and the community behind us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir, ma'am.
Thank you, Board. Thank you for having us. My name is Kamara, K-A-M-A-R-A, Bowen, B-O-W-E-N. I am speaking on behalf of the approval of this project. I do understand as a community member, you know, that the project is aggressive. You know, it does seem like, okay, what's going to happen? However, being able to get to know Mr. Miri and knowing that a lot of people come into the community and they don't even take the opportunity to even know what the community wants or even axes. They just come and they build. So the fact that he is even supporting businesses like mine, you know, I'm a mobile notary out here, electronic notary. He supports a lot of the black-owned businesses to try to, try to build. So, you know, to speak on his character, you know, it's very, very, very well that he is coming in and wanting to actually do something. So I do understand that there is some things that need to be looked at and worked through. But I think the project of building the community is where we really need to be able to come together and say, hey, let's do it. Let's take a chance. Because, I mean, what are we doing already? You know? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am, sir.
How you guys doing this evening? My name is Demetrius Skinner. That is D-E-M-I-T-R-I-U-S, S-K-I-N-N-E-R. I'm a New York Life agent, and we've been dedicated to helping out with the revitalization of the West Side. This is one of the things that I was very passionate about myself when I first moved to Vegas here and heard about the things that were going on over there. With New York Life, what we're doing is we're providing some philanthropy, philanthropy opportunities, some economic opportunities, also with some seminars for financial literacy. The idea behind this is to partner with the residents, partners, partner with other businesses to get to the place where, you know, they want to get inclusion in these new developments that are here. When doing that, there's education and understanding that has to be available to them as well. So meeting with them earlier today, we talked about different things that we can come up with together as a group and with the other people in the resident, in the neighborhood to make sure that we are accommodating everybody and everything that is needed in that area. Like a lot of people talked about, sorry, ditto, about the historic part of the West Side, there's a lot of historical landmarks over there. And as far as with these new developments, we don't want the people, neither the history to be taken away as well. With a hotel coming over there, that's a tourist attraction. Along with that, there's other tourist attractions that are being hidden that a lot of people don't know about, far as the Pioneer Trail, Harrison House, a lot of different locations over in that area that need a little revitalization, conservation as well, so that when people do come into this area, they can come and they can, you know, enjoy the rich history that is the West Side. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's go, ma'am, on the left.
Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Muthert.
My name is Cordelia Wallace-Freeman. I own a home at 610 West Van Buren Avenue, so I literally live at ground zero, in where the proposed site for the Harlem Knights mixed-use hotel housing project will be built. I am opposed to the Harlem Knights project because it will adversely impact the value of my home, cause property values to increase, increase traffic exponentially 24 hours and every day. Privacy will be lost, light and noise pollution will increase, heat island effect will also skyrocket. People keep saying that I and the other homeowners, we are standing in the way of progress. But I wish that people would realize that this behemoth will destroy the value and livability of my home and our homes. And we've worked really hard to make our homes, our houses, homes, and to build generational wealth for our families. I don't have high-powered lawyers, friends in high places, or deep pockets to bring in paid supporters or do backroom deals with people who will, with people who will not be directly impacted by this ill-suited project. With the amount of lies, half-truths, omission of planned details, the only conclusion I can come to is this project will not benefit, but will be a detriment to my homestead. If this project was on the up and up, why did basically the owners go to everyone, and I mean everyone else? Newspapers, news stations, they had luncheons, breakfast, they went to breakfast prayers. They, they did not even come to the homeowners who would be directly impacted in the immediate vicinity to garner our support. They went to everybody else but us. So it made me question, would this really be a benefit to us?
Ma'am, sorry.
You know, and the streets, it just, the area, we have literally one lane, each-way streets. The streets are not built to support this kind of project. The traffic, it cannot support that and hold that and everything.
Ma'am, I'm going to need you to wrap up.
Okay.
You passed your two minutes. Thank you so much.
Okay. And I just have one last thing to say.
Sure.
At the end of the day, everybody who comes out in support of this, they will go someplace else in the city. But me, at the end of the day, I have no place else to go but here at 610 West Van Buren Avenue. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir? Anybody else come on down, take the microphone? It is, says MIC button.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank each and every one of you who has given your time to listen to what we have to say. My name is Gene Collins. I live, for the record, at 1411 Virginia City Avenue, Las Vegas 89106. I'm the former president, now I'm a former state of settlement. I'm a former president of the NAACP. I'm a former president of Reverend Al Sharpton's National Action Network. I'm a former business owner. My mother came to Las Vegas in 1955, and she lived in West Las Vegas. I reside in the historical black West Side community as we speak. I rise in opposition against what on the agenda as the Harlem Knights, what they want to build. 60 years ago, beginning at A Street, A and Jackson, to H and Jackson, 60 years today, we don't have one black business on Jackson Street. I rise to speak because I don't want you all to be fooled by the fancy drawing and the fancy people that are coming up here talking and the meeting. See, those, most of those individuals does not li- See, those, most of those individuals does not live in 89106 as I do. I still live. Someone mentioned the incubator, my project. Someone mentioned the hundred-year plan. There has not been a plan that the city has had that Gene Collins wasn't involved in it. My job was to go across the country and see how other cities build their infrastructure, and I would bring that information back to Las Vegas so that we could revitalize our community. Now, what you have heard is people's coming up and saying, well, I'm a part of this, I'm a part of this. Well, I still live where I been fighting to make sure that our community look like any other community. Not asking anybody to give us anything, but pay us for the work that we have already done. That's what I've done. Someone said that we had community meetings and 75% of the peoples there supported, that that's incorrect. That is incorrect. And what I rise to say, don't get hawk-weened. I'm in agreement with what y'all has already alluded to, what staff has already, you all in the business of knowing what is and what's not. Two years ago.
And, sir, if you can wrap up, you're about.
I got, let me have another say. Two years ago.
Okay.
I met with peoples from Mr. Murray. I asked him two questions. Number one, do you have the means of financing this project? In other words, do you have the money? That was two years ago. The other question I asked him, if you have the money, how do we fit into your project? Because we was the one who fought the bad elements and got the community the way that anybody now who wants to do business in the community, or anybody you want to see walking down the historical black West Side community, any national identity of an individual, they are there because we risked our lives to make sure peoples like him could invest in our community. We're not against him. What we want him to show us, where is the money and what procedure does he have? They told you that we're working on the money. But two years ago, when I asked the question, don't you think that he should know where the money is? And I asked him, let's go to the bank, the last meeting I had with, let's go to the bank, and let the manager of the bank show you and me so that I can tell the community that what you're saying is factual. And he says, no, I don't have the money, but I got the land. So, what I'm telling you, and I appreciate what you're doing, but stick with what staff has objected y'all to do. God bless you and thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Okay, to the right. And anybody else who wants to talk, come and occupy a microphone as soon as it's empty. Down at the bottom, sir, it says MIC, right next to speak. There you go.
Is that it?
That is it.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Lance McCarthy, L-A-N-C-E, M-C-C-A-R-T-H-Y. I am by training an economist. I have advised two United States Presidents. I'm an author, Wall Street to the Who. I've written about urban development across this country. I've run an organization headquartered here in Las Vegas called The Black Agenda. It is to create 100 black millionaires in every sector of the economy. I've been very fortunate with my career to help urban cities around the country redevelop themselves. I have been a part of this project and have analyzed the project. I believe that it is a very viable project from two perspectives. One, of course, you heard earlier, job creation. And then, two, helping entrepreneurship. When you look at the West Side that has not had development in over 30 years, a comprehensive plan of this nature will not only help the community, but help the entire Las Vegas area. I used to be the Urban League President in Orlando, the same type of model, was based on tourism, where the community did not get a part of development. And I believe this project will be a part of that. I've examined the community benefits and see how the community can benefit from that perspective. As I stated, The Black Agenda is 100% behind this, not only locally but nationally. We're also assisting in the capital formation of this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, let's move all the way to the left.
Hello, and thank you, Chair and the Commissioners. I am Evelyn Paccheco, E-V-E-L-Y-N-P-A-C-H-E-C-O. I am the first black woman to get a plumber's license in the state of Nevada. I am also the co-chair of the Nevada Veterans Caucus Laborers. I am also the first woman, the first black woman to make commander of American Legion Post 51. And I am also the owner and the president of Nevada Women in Trades. And we are part of the team. And I'm here to ask you to approve this project. I believe this project is going to help women get hired that look like me. And it's also gonna help contractors that look like me to be on this project. And it would also help recidivism, which is something that's very big, that we need jobs, they need jobs, is also gonna help the community see women look like me on these projects. And that's what's been asked for, for a long time in this community. I also want to raise a point that the mayor, she did a city address, and she not specifically talked about this project, but she did say that it's time, it's time for Ward 5 to look like the rest of the city. And I vote for that.
Thank you very much, ma'am. And we'll move to the center.
Thank you.
Microphone.
Catherine Duncan, D-U-N-C-A-N, Reed. Recently married. And I'm here in two capacities. I live on F Street. I live at 1001 F Street. So, I was there when F Street closed. We all know about that debacle. And this project has a definite impact, not only on my home, my, my project, but also on the whole community. We are what's called a three U-D community. And there's 127 communities like this across America that were once segregated. So, we're trying to recover from historical segregation. Fortunately, there's a process that other cities are using, so we've studied best practices on how to move a community like this forward. And there's some digital resources available. Now, we understand that this project has been on the books since 2014, so it seems like by now I should know about it since I live on F Street. So, it seems to me, because there's so much development planned for the West Side, we talk about the Community College, the Harlem Knights, the West Side residents, the Marble Manor, all the complete street improvements, and there's no way to organize all of these developments on one platform until now, because we have the internet. So, what we're proposing, and the developer has agreed, to take 1% of his budget, his cost budget, of his construction budget, and put it into a West Side Improvement Fund. And we've been working with New York Life over here. They're gonna help us create that fund that will be overseen by a community council. So, we believe that if we can get this 1% community benefit agreement as part of the conditions, that we would be in a position to ask you to approve this project, because we don't want it to be denied. We want it to be approved with the condition that we can get together with all the residents who have a say-so on what they would like to see, so that they can have some input. We just don't know what's going on with the project. So, virtual community action planning would be done in concert with UNLV, with CSN, with the STEM centers in our community, those of us who are not in the community, because the word "communities" was throwing us all off. Some people say Ward 5, some say West Las Vegas. We're the historic West Side. And the developer did talk to the community and talk to West Las Vegas, but hasn't had a chance to engage the actual neighborhood, whether, for the project is setting. So, this virtual community action planning process, we believe, will work, because it's working in Los Angeles, it's working in Kansas City, and we want to give a chance for it to work here in Las Vegas, so that we can become the most thought-after tourist destination in the world, on the West Side.
Thank you very much, sir. On the right.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Christian Solomon, C-H-R-I-S-T-I-A-N, S-O-L-O-M-O-N. I'd like to speak in support, oh, I'm sorry, I lead a Gen Z-led issue advocacy organization for college students and youth. I'd like to speak in support of the Harlem Knights project, because after reviewing the community benefits plan, I'm elated to see that our college student community will have an influential voice on the Harlem Knights Community Advisory Board. Having a student voice on the board will promote entrepreneurial opportunities for our young people, which is what is greatly needed in our city. And the developer's intent to obtain community input on this project and disperse annual net operating income to provide workforce training, educational programs, as well as grants, is thoroughly outlined in this benefit plan. Harlem Knights is a community-driven project. I'm very much looking forward to partying over there, and I urge you to support it as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir. And over to the left.
My name is Derek Washington. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My family has been in Las Vegas for over 40 years. I am a former candidate for City Council in Ward 5. In addition to being the chairman of several community-focused and voter-education organizations, I'm currently the Director of Community Outreach for this project, which I beseech you to approve. Ward 5 is very diverse economically, from working-class families to custom million-dollar homes and horse ranches. It's a thriving section of the city that reflects all of the different people and experiences that make Las Vegas the great place to live, work, and do business that it is. However, one part of Ward 5 is not shared in the economic exuberance of both the ward and the city in general. That area is the historically important West Side of Las Vegas in Ward 5. Rather than focus on why development has bypassed the area, I choose to follow the developer of this project's optimistic view of the future that can be, while working with the community to not only build for the future, but honor the past of this very proud community. This project is the first that I'm aware of that includes investing 10% of its net operating income to be controlled by a community board, to invest in not just the business of the community, but its organizations and groups. This investment will go a long way towards making sure the current residents are incentivized to remain in the community and reap the benefits of new enterprises and opportunities. This development is the only major development in the area I'm aware of that plans to honor the magical past of the area while looking forward to a vibrant future. When I ran for City Council, excuse me, I constantly was told that people in the area want to be in a safe neighborhood that had all the latest improvements. They also told me, even in my recent walks around the neighborhood, talking to the residents bordering the project, that they want a place the community can gather for after-church brunch, going out for a Saturday night drink, having a place to bring back the spirit of the heyday of Jackson Street, all of which and more this project will do. It will also be the engine that powers other proposed developments in the area, and hopefully the residents will make sure that every project going forward takes on the challenge of making sure that those projects include a benefit to the community. Our benefits package was created by Mr. Murray and Bishop Remson here, and it is a template that hopefully the community is going forward. We have great forward-thinking leadership in Mayor Berkeley and Councilwoman Ms. Armstrong, and we hope that you will help them fulfill their vision for development and re-energize in the West Side. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. If anybody else is speaking, there's two empty microphones. Come on down. Okay? Please, sir. Thank you.
All right. For the record, my name is Bishop, B-I-S-H-O-P, Derek, D-E-R-E-K, Remson, R-I-M-S-O-N. Thank you again for hearing us on this particular project. Of course, it's 62, it's past my bedtime, and I know it's past yours, but it is something that we need to really, really consider. And I've heard all of the various arguments throughout the last several months or so. But at the end of the day, this community has set desolate for more than 50 years. No economic development, no economic finances, no economic engine to produce economical stability and sustainability for this community. We look around us on the parameter of the historical West Side, and we see numerous engines, numerous economic engines that are casino hotels, that are helping to drive these communities. When you look to the south, you look at South Point Casino, you look at M Resorts. Of course, when you look at the 4.7-mile Las Vegas Strip, you see all of these billion-dollar casinos. We have professional sports teams that are now coming to the city of Las Vegas, and whether we want to admit it or not, Las Vegas is no longer a one-horse town. It's actually, has emerged into a metropolitan city such as Detroit, Chicago, Detroit, and Atlanta. And when you look, of course, to the north, there are casino hotels, there are vast developments. When you look to the west, you have the Durango Casino Hotel that is fueling the west side of town. When you look to the east, you have Station Casino Hotels. Only place that does not have economic development with an engine to fuel its economy is the historical West Side. I am in favor of this particular project, simply because I think it is the engine that is needed to allow the historical West Side and our people to be able to have a thriving economy like our sisters and brothers on the suburban parameter. One of the things, in my closing, one of the things that I am really concerned with, with high-speed rail, with billion-dollar stadiums that are being erected, with Californians that are migrating to this city, is the fact that eventually billion-dollar corporations are going to take and seize this community, which will ultimately cause us to lose our heritage, cause us to lose our Africanicity, and then, of course, will cause us to not have a community. So, please, please, I thank you, as it was with David Ruffin and the temptation. I have no problems. I can humble myself to beg and to plead, and hopefully you will sanction this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Ma'am, go ahead.
Is it on?
Now, it's on.
Okay. I'm Eugenia Houston-Green. I've listened to quite a few people state some things, and apparently, a few people that spoke in support of this project were misinformed or did not have all of the information or incorrect information. I hope that some of you sitting before us have a history, actually, an accurate history of West Las Vegas. Okay? My family had over 80 years in this town. Elijah Green was the young man who had the grandfather-caused gaming license, along with his uncle, Dan Curtis, was owner of the town tavern. His daughter, Tara Jackson, was the last owner. I understand that there was a Tokyo casino, but to my knowledge, it never operated, remained empty. So, that part of the history is also incorrect. What I'm concerned about is being in Las Vegas as long as I have been here, which is over 50 years at this point, I've watched the West Side, the historic black West Side, get passed over, get screwed over, to be perfectly honest about it. And I'm concerned about gentrification, as I've observed it happen in other large cities throughout this country. I think that sometimes should be applied to understand what is really going on, who really is going to benefit. I do live in 89106 area code, right down the street from Jackson and F Street. And I am concerned that we don't get screwed over yet again, which I have observed for over 50 years in this town. over 50 years in this town. We've been looked over, screwed over, and it seems to continue to be that way. I hope that they're honorable and their intentions are not just greedy, grubbing people that are looking to do whatever they can do for themselves and leave the community in the condition that it is. It's in this condition by design. It was designed to be what it is. Let's be honest about it. So I want to know that people's intentions are, in fact, honorable. And yeah, they should be able to make some money. Good luck, everybody.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Okay, seeing nobody else for public comment, I will now close public hearing for Item 30 and Item 31 and invite the applicant back down to provide some additional comments.
Jo Cato, C-A-T-O for the record. And I wanted to, for point of clarification, when we mentioned Little Tokyo, we did not mention that it was an operating casino. The project preceded us with the name of that casino. So because we wanted to show the history, we mentioned Little Tokyo. And for other points that were mentioned, for financing, we have turned in for exhibits to show that the project will be financed. That's one of the questions, that's one of the concerns that was stated by one of the speakers, Mr. Collins, I believe. We did submit those documents for that. So the financing is in place. Also, a gentleman mentioned Station Casinos, where Station Casino imploded their casino and it's turning into affordable housing. And that goes to the vein of what we're doing. We are also having affordable housing in this project. So the similarities are the same, that there will be affordable housing on that plot of land over there. We are working to have affordable housing on this plot of land over here. And I'll allow Brianna to reiterate some points as well, and then we'll take questions.
Thank you.
Brianna Lucier, B-R-E-A-N-N-A-L-U-C-I-E-R. So I just wanted to reiterate what Jo said earlier, that we respectfully disagree with the staff's recommendation for denial. We understand that their job is to assess the request within narrow technical framework, but tonight we're asking this commission to look at the broader picture, because this project is bigger than any variance or setback. As my boss, Shlomo Meir, often says, "The dollar in the Jewish community turns over 12 times before it ever leaves. In the Indian community, it's 10 times. In the African-American community, it's 2." He's trying to make it 3. That's not just a soundbite, it's a strategy. This project was designed to retain wealth, jobs, and ownership within the west side, and to build a model where the economic energy generated here actually stays here. He owns this property. He's been investing in this neighborhood for over 15 years, and we're not going anywhere. From our view, this is the only project on the table anywhere with the scale and substance to truly transform the west side. This isn't just another development, it's been designed specifically for the historic west side with soul, with economic weight, and with a real recurring give-back baked into its foundation. Our project includes a 207-room hotel. A 200-plus-room count is required to maintain the full liquor license, which is essential to the success of the project's hospitality, entertainment, and food and beverage options. To meet that threshold and include the necessary amenities, retail, theater, rooftop venues, spa, and workforce infrastructure, a vertical format isn't just preferred, it's structurally and economically necessary. The city's current seven-story height cap on this property is a serious planning oversight, one that directly blocks the viability of real revitalization corridor. And it's not just any site. This is one of the only two parcels in the historic west side with a grandfather casino license, and the only one on Jackson Avenue. To impose an arbitrary vertical limit on a property uniquely suited to drive economic growth, create jobs, and generate community reinvestment is not just short-sighted, it's damaging. There is no viable way to deliver a casino with 200-plus hotel rooms on the 600 Jackson Avenue site alone. Height is not an indulgence, it's a must in order to continue. We plan to include a performing arts theater, rooftop venues, a restaurant on Jackson Avenue, a coffee shop on F Street, a convention center for trade shows, and a historic west side museum. 10% of the net operating income will go into a community give-back fund in perpetuity. This is not a one-time gift, this is not a short-term pledge. This is a proposed, permanently recorded covenant tied to the land, guaranteeing annual reinvestment into the historic west side forever. This offer is unprecedented. No other developer has brought forward a binding perpetual give-back of this scale to this neighborhood, or any other neighborhood in Las Vegas, or in the world, to our knowledge. It's not a grant, it's not a campaign promise, it's a contractual commitment that we would like written into the land itself. But let me be clear, if this entitlement is denied and we are forced to build something else within a seven-story limit, that 10% give-back has to go away. A project that size simply will not generate the revenue to sustain that. The result would be a smaller, less ambitious, less valuable development with far less benefit to the city and the community. This project will generate a substantial increase in property tax and sales and use tax revenue for both the city and the state, driven by new retail, food and beverage, hotel stays, and overall land value uplift from a currently underutilized site. We are members of the Urban Chamber of Commerce, and we have received support from their leadership. We have secured a letter from the House of God Church, who has 200 churches worldwide. They plan to bring hundreds of members monthly to patronize the project. 90% of the community members we've actually engaged with support this project. What we've heard loud and clear is that people are fed up with the cycle of broken promises, political inconsistency, and neglect that has kept the west side in a state of disrepair. They want real change, not lip service, not symbolic gestures, but meaningful, visible, community-driven investment. We have also received a signed letter of support from multiple historic west side pastors, collectively affirming this project's cultural value and long-term benefit to the community. We've received a formal letter of support from Nevada Women in Trades, affirming their alignment with our workforce development goals and commitment to inclusive economic opportunity on this project. We've entered into formal agreements with the Southern Nevada Building and Construction Trades Council and the Culinary Workers Union, ensuring good-paying union jobs during construction and operation. In addition to formal outreach, we've also seen strong organic support online. Recent Facebook posts sharing our project received dozens of positive public comments with community members expressing excitement about seeing real investment come to the west side. This was not a post by us, it was by a member of the community that we came across. People spoke about wanting change, welcoming the development, and appreciating that this project reflects the culture and the future of the neighborhood. This kind of unscripted enthusiasm reinforces what we've heard directly. The community is ready, and they want this. We've also taken care to ensure this project meets the highest standards in how we handle sensitive uses and neighborhood infrastructure. There's been some concern about the massage establishment within the project. This is a 548-square-foot wellness room inside the resort spa, not a massage storefront, not a separate massage house. It's part of the hospitality program under normal, full, resort-level management, security, and code compliance. We understand the code separation requirements, but we believe that context matters. This is a private, internal amenity for guests, not a high-risk use, and we are committed to full compliance. There's also the question of the alley vacation behind the Jackson Hotel. We completely agree that no space should be left undefined or unmaintained, but if we own all the adjacent parcels, there is no ambiguity, no neighboring owners being affected by that vacation. Also, we noted that the last report we received from planning recommended approval of the vacation, so we question what has changed. This alley is not serving a vital public purpose, it's an inactive corridor behind underused land that we're trying to bring to life. This is exactly the kind of cleanup and reactivation that the city supports.
Are you, sorry, I'm just trying to, are you close to wrapping up? I'm looking at that thick little stapled paper and hoping you can summarize.
Yeah, we're about to turn into a pumpkin Cinderella. So, Madam Chair and members of the commission, this project is a reinvestment legacy, place and people. We respectfully request your vote of approval, and we're prepared to move forward immediately with your blessing, and we're open for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I will turn it back over to the commission, starting with Commissioner Munford for questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I make a comment, I'd like to ask anybody on the board to make any statements or any concerns or have any questions.
Okay. I have a couple, if that's okay. So I'm looking at this community benefit agreement, and I understand that it is intended to remain in effect for the life of the project, and that you're looking for a recordation as a way of enforcement. My question is, does effect for the life of the project mean just into perpetuity? What happens if it goes bankrupt? What happens if it ends up bankrupt? What happens if it ends up like the Fountain Blue, where it just stays vacant for a really long time? Like, where's the enforcement?
I'll take a stab. Our vision for this community benefits plan is, if it should go bankrupt, God forbid, that whoever acquires that property, if that happens, that's deeded in the title as part of the condition, so it will continue. Yes, thank you.
And then, have you had discussions with the FAA about the height since it is in the FAA zone?
Yes, I was supposed to mention that in my comments. Yeah, we have applied to the FAA for this. They have reviewed it. We have a 351-foot-high building. I know in the staff comments it said 361, but it's actually 351. The FAA has given us a preliminary approval for 479 feet.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, on the financing question, you guys submitted documents in your packet that you've got, that you've secured this investment interest from PACE Loan Group. And what I know about PACE is that it stands for Property-Assessed Clean Energy, and I understood that it was, that PACE loans would be, you know, again, secured against the property, but with a specific intent for sustainability, conservation efforts, renewable energy, energy efficiency. So is that happening with this building? Is that the plan? Is it going to be?
Yes.
Energy efficient, sustainable, lead, rooftop solar, what's going on with it that would qualify it for PACE?
Well, we are providing, as far as the parking goes, for example, we have 479 parking spaces, we have 100 spaces set up for electric car vehicle charging stations. I'm sure we'd also be involved with regarding to solar energy, as far as rooftop-type units, that type of thing.
Okay. And are you doing energy efficiency measures inside, LEDs?
Well, all of the lighting, obviously, the lighting, the air conditioning systems, everything in the building will be energy efficient.
Is there an intent to try to get it qualified under one of the LEED criteria?
Potentially. We have to get with our consultants on that and see what input they're going to give us.
Okay, all right, thank you. Those are my questions. I know Commissioner DeSalvo had questions.
Thank you. First of all, thanks for meeting with me, Jo and Derek. I got some questions, and I told you I was going to have them, so I hope you're prepared. Right? First off, I'm totally, as of right now, in favor of it. I have watched Ward Five not do anything as far as development as a planning commissioner, as an advocate in the community. I spend a lot of time up there, Nevada Partners is up there, I deal with a lot of youth, right? So to me, this, I'm all over it. I love it. Now here's where you might screw it up, right? So I need this stuff kind of answered for me to wrap my head around it. And I told you I was going to come at you with it, right? So first, let's start with the community benefit. Who is benefiting from this? Because there's nothing in here. Tell me what group, don't tell me a pastor, don't tell me a church, tell me what group benefits. Are we talking Big Brothers, Big Sisters? Are we talking battered women? Because there's nothing in the benefit that shows me who's getting the benefit.
So the intent is for the 10%, and I'll start there.
I don't care about the 10%. Who is getting the benefit?
So 4% is towards economic development of projects and housing restoration, so that's people in the community, right?
Okay, I'm going to stop you right there. Who is the benefit? You're telling me 4% is going, but who? What organizations? If you want to be in the community and you want to be netted, listen, you know I deal with community benefit agreements and PLAs and all this all day long and twice on Sunday? So I'm trying to get to the bottom of it. Who is going to reap the benefit? What organizations? That's strong to me.
That's very strong to you, and I understand your question. The intent of the community benefit agreement, and I'll go back to that, that when we compartmentalize how we break out, how the monies will be distributed. We have not identified specific organizations as of yet, but what we do know is the organizations will be part of Ward Five.
Okay, so that's what I need. Between now and City Council, we have to identify who's really receiving a benefit. Because if I come to the city or the county with a benefit agreement, I have to come to them and say, okay, if you enter into this agreement, whether it be the city, the county, or whoever, we're going to call out an actual Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Hope for Prisoners, whatever the case may be, that's what I'm looking for. So I would hope between now and City Council, we get that fixed, right?
Commissioner DeSalvo, what we will do, we'll make a note of that, and we will start identifying organizations that when we go to City Council, we'll have that information.
Okay. Next thing is, you handed, when it was asked by the chairwoman for, and you knew I was going there with this one too, proof of funding, which you submitted to the chairwoman, has nothing in here that talks about your money, nothing. Show me one piece of paper here that says anything about that you have from a bank, a loan agreement.
There's one with an SEA letterhead that is an offer of $500 million.
This is basically just people supporting your project.
Commissioner DeSalvo, they said there's only one copy. Let me pass it down.
Please do.
Yeah.
And this is guaranteed?
Yes.
This is guaranteed funds?
Yes.
Is it contingent upon approval, or what?
I believe so, yes.
It's contingent upon approval?
Yes.
Okay, just be prepared for City Council now.
Yes.
Okay. Lease agreements. We talked, you guys in your opening statements talked about that you had, you know, barber shops, nightclubs. Do we have, right now, signed letters of intent from these individuals, or these operators, or any businesses that you talked about that was going into this property?
We have support from businesses, but no, no lease agreement as of yet. But we do have a list of potential businesses that would be aligned with...
All right, so that would be something I would also make a strong recommendation, that you try to tighten up prior to here, whether it gets approved or not, but moving on to City Council, right? Do you have, what's the estimated cost of this project? As the architect, you should be able to answer that one real quick.
450 million.
400 what?
450 million.
450 million. And do you have already a general contractor picked out for this project? Has anybody looked at the drawings and said, okay, we get approval, we can pull the trigger? Do you have a general contractor?
We have not signed with one yet. We've been looking at them, talking to them.
Okay. So that might be another thing you might want to tighten up before City Council. These are all the things that you're going to get hit with, and I hit you with them when we met, to get you prepared, because these are the things... to get you prepared, because these are the things that I wanna know. Last thing I wanna be on the hook for is the people of this community that stood here and ain't seen nothing for 25 years. They deserve something, more than a McDonald's, more than a Popeyes. They deserve something. And to me, I refuse to plan for profit. I'm not gonna sit here and support something, and I was straightforward with you guys when we met, and not see it going anywhere. So, that's why it's important to me that you have all these issues massaged out before you go to City Council, because if you think I'm gonna be tough on you, they're gonna be seven times tough on you. So, well, like I said, I support it because I believe Ward Five needs this as a kickstart to get other people to go, you know what, he pulled it off, now I know there's skin in the game, I wanna invest, kinda thing, right? It's always needed that, in my eyes. So, I do support it, but you guys are gonna need to have something a little bit more than what you presented today, than some fluff, all right? So, that's my comment.
Great, thanks. Commissioner Schlupman?
Yes, Chairwoman, through you. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and I met with applicant, and I met with Derek Stevens about this project. And, look, I mean, it's a beautiful project, beautiful building, you know, and we all wanna see something happen on the historic West Side. But, you know, I've been sitting up here years, and what we've been seeing coming was, we see smaller residential housing developments and multifamily, and we've seen some of this, we've seen some of this get approved over the past few months. And if you look back historically at a lot of these high-rises that are being proposed in locations where it's at a far greater height than everything around it, historically, they just haven't been built. Banks don't wanna fund them, and it's harder to get financing. And, you know, I could probably name five of them, and I can name one of them this past year that was probably only about six blocks away from Las Vegas Boulevard, much closer to the other high-rises, which, you know, I made a motion to deny. Now, if that one actually gets built, or this gets built, or whatever, am I gonna be upset? No, I'm not gonna be upset. I think it'd be a great thing for the community. But we also have to look at the fact of, when we propose buildings in areas where they don't necessarily fit, then the neighbor thinks that their property is worth, you know, 10x, 20x, because theirs should be, you know, zoned for high-rise. And then, the next person on the other side thinks that theirs should be zoned for high-rise. And then, sometimes what happens is, it cannibalizes a whole neighborhood, where nothing happens in that neighborhood, you know, for the next 10 years because of a certain set of entitlements that happen on a particular property that doesn't get built. And I could name one that was on Maryland Parkway, right across the street from the center, that I was opposed to. City Council approved. This one's never been built. You know, the, I'm not gonna list all of them off, but I do have those concerns. If it actually did get built, you know, it could be a catalyst for that community. But if it doesn't get built, it really could hurt that community. And it could hurt that community having the entitlements and not being built. And that concerns me, just as every other high-rise that's come before us that didn't have all of these things answered. So, I would just say, before you get to City Council, you really have to do some homework. You really have to prove up some financing. I don't care about the, I mean, yes, I do care about giving back 10%. That's a great gesture. But for me, I'm not looking at what is the developer actually giving to a community to make me vote a particular way. I'm looking at a project as, is it good for that community on its own merits? And is it good, good for that community, or bad for that community if it doesn't get built? So, that's some of my thoughts, and hopefully, y'all can get some of those things figured out before you get to City Council.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Munford?
All right. So, you know, people came up here today, and they talked about their history with the community. I remember I was probably six, seven years old when I first went on Jackson Street with my dad. And I remember what that street looked like. And I remember the businesses and the people who were on that street. A lot of them looked like me. And that was, that was, I was a little kid, and that was when my father first moved to Las Vegas. And so, you know, when we talk about Jackson Street, you know, I remember it as a kid. And I remember when you were just talking about the dollar circulating in the community. Back then, the dollar did circulate in the community because it had to, because we were forced to live in that community. And to, you know, back then, we had professionals and people that lived, this was back in '68, '67, early '70s. You know, the Hundred Plan, I was going through here, and I was looking at it. And the Hundred Plan is put together, and it's a, I guess you could say it's a roadmap to what the vision was, our vision is, because it's, you know, somebody mentioned it's been revised, of what could be, you know, what could be done in the Jackson Street corridor. Commissioner DeSalvo, he brought up a good point about the community benefits and where it's going. I'm kinda the same way. That's, right now, that's not my concern in terms of the community benefits program, because over these years, there have been community benefits programs in that community already. And we have not seen it benefit the community. That's why, when you go in that community, there are a lot of people who doubt, and we have a right to doubt because we've been promised things over those 50 years, or whatever you wanna say, during that time period, and nothing has happened. So, you know, on the merit of what Planning has been talking about, and their recommendation in terms of denying this part of it being based on the Hundred Plan, I have a question in terms of this, has there been a feasibility study done or paid for? To see what, you know, what, you know, how well a casino project do in this area? And the reason I'm asking is, you know, you see it done all the time by businesses. You know, I'm a business person. Before I go into a business, if I was gonna open up a hotel in a certain area, if I was gonna open up a RV park in a certain area, I'm gonna do a feasibility study. So, I can kinda see what, you know, I worked for a big development company out of LA. We did retail. They had a whole data center on the rooftops and a potential business if they bought that shopping center in that area, before they even pulled the trigger. Has a feasibility statement done?
No.
Okay. Again, that's probably another thing that you gotta put together for Council.
We'll add that to our list, yes, thank you.
And the reason I mention that is because our job, I guess, is a planning commission, and then before, when you go before the City Council, and for Planning Department. When any project comes before us, we have to determine the risk management, and I guess for ourselves, in terms of approving anything, just like Commissioner said. We've seen, I mean, I could, right there on Rancho, I remember watching City Council, and I remember Mayor Goodman grilling this developer about a multifamily project right there across from where Agora is building right now on Rancho. And that, and the same thing, we're fully funded, we're ready to go, and when you drive, and that was back prior to 2008, and that lot is still empty. And so, I guess, you know, when you're watching, when I was watching Mayor Goodman, and he was grilling those, you know, again, like, everybody's saying here, at the end of the day, we wanna see these, you know, and a lot of people, you know, I talked to Gene. Gene wants this project to happen for the community, if it could happen. There's a lot of people in the community who may sound opposed to it, but I think they want this project to happen because, yeah, it could potentially be a great catalyst for this. My philosophy is, not just this project, but that whole entire area, there's opportunity that has not been tapped. And I've mentioned that to different people as they've talked to me. And so, my feeling that this, you know, a lot of times we act like, you know, if this project doesn't happen, all hope is lost. I don't believe in that. I believe, you know, I worked for a company. When I worked for them, and I saw them investing on that side of town, and where they were investing, I thought they were crazy. But as I worked for them, I saw that there is a lot of opportunity on this side of town. But what I learned from working with that company as well is that a lot of the things that everybody's mentioned, Commissioner DeSalvio, you know, all the way down, all of those things that they're talking about in terms of you doing your due diligence, so that when you walk in this door, you know, we're not the ones kind of telling you what you might wanna be presenting, you know, when you go before City Council. And so, because of that, because in my opinion, there's been a lack of preparation in terms of where you guys are at right now, I recommend to go with what Planning has suggested for nonapproval. Commissioner DeSalvo said, you know, this is still gonna go before City Council. And the reason I'm going with this nonapproval is that when it goes before City Council, hopefully, all the things that we mentioned, you'll have that together. And that's the only reason that I'm gonna, I can't back this at this moment. That's one of the main reasons, because just based on what Planning's put here, and a lot of the things that we're talking about, you know, with the, you know, more detail on that community benefits agreement, you know, that doesn't mean anything until there's more details about it. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of big question marks that a lot of us have, a lot of us in the community have. And so, like I said, I'm gonna motion, I'm gonna, for me, I'm gonna motion for nonapproval.
Commissioner Munford?
Yes.
Through you, Madam Chair. So, it's our understanding, because of our lack of a feasibility study, that hinges on your recommendation to follow staff recommendation for a feasibility study?
No, not just, that's, that now, I would like, in terms of feasibility study, I think that, again, that's, I don't think that's something that staff or anybody's required to see. I mean, I don't, I mean, their recommendation is based on, without the feasibility study. Their recommendation is based on what they listed. A big one is the Hundred Plan, that it doesn't fall in line with the Hundred Plan.
So, is it our understanding that your recommendation for denial hinges on the 100 Plan?
My recommendation for denial is based on the whole list of what Planning has put in terms of their denial. My recommendation is that I agree with Planning in terms of what they've come across with, and that, like I said, and then with the other concerns that some of the people on this commission have in terms of moving forward. Which is, I mean, I have like two pages of notes of different things that have come across here.
Okay. I think what's, I just kinda wanna wrap this up a little bit, if that's okay. Commissioner, I don't mean to cut you off, because this has been a really great discussion, but at the end of the night, right, we are the Planning Commission. We are here to evaluate your applications for things like a rezone, a variance, your special use permit. And so, a lot of the things that we've discussed, while they may be concerns to us as members of this body generally, we are charged with looking at the application and the specific items, and evaluating the recommendations from staff. And so, I think, you know, not speaking for Commissioner Munford, but I think, you know, talking about these sort of ancillary items, like the community benefit agreement, even the financing, those kinds of things, at the end of the day, for me, what this hinges on is what you have asked for from a zoning perspective, from a variance perspective, from the height perspective, and what staff is recommending, and as a body that does planning and zoning, that is really what, you know, like, that's my focus, and that is what we're supposed to be looking at. So, you know, I think you got some good input from folks going to the policy body, but for us, it's really this planning and zoning overlay that we're in charge, that we're charged with.
Yeah, for Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
And what Madam Chair just said, basically, and I think that's what I said, in terms, you know, like I said, and, you know, the community benefits plan, like I said, that's not my, I said, you know, that's not my concern. It's really, I'm looking at what Planning, that the Planning Department has recommended, and where we're, you know, where we're at right now in terms of, and those things, like I said, moving forward, going to City Council, I think, as you go to City Council, you have some things, some foundations that you can, you know, work on, so that, you know, that this might, this might work with City Council.
So, Commissioner, if you wanna go ahead and make your motion, that would be fantastic.
Madam Chair, if I could?
Quickly.
I have a question. Sorry, Madam Chair, the client is asking for the item to be tabled.
They want, now, you don't wanna vote on the item itself? You would wanna have this, tabling is different than... Tabling is a big thing.
It's a big thing, I know.
Yeah, it's not 30 days, we're coming back, it's, you're taking it off.
It's taken it off.
I will take it off. I submit the plan that you guys request, seven stories. There is no benefit to any community. There is no, there is no benefit to give to anybody. I cannot do any extra giving to the community. And I'm gonna submit, if it's possible, the seven stories that you request and table it. Nothing, nothing.
You understand that, you understand that this goes to City Council? No matter what we do here, you guys have the right to go forward to City Council.
I come with an open hand.
No, I understand that.
I understand. I wanna table it. I will bring seven stories. It's not gonna be any hotel. It's not gonna be any businesses, and we leave it at that.
Oh, sir, yes. Can you please state your name for the record?
I'm... The community gonna lose, not me.
Your name into the record, Jesus.
I'm sorry. I'm, again, for the record, I would like to, I understand where it's coming from. My name is Shlomo Meiri.
Thank you.
I'm the owner of the, I own the property.
Right.
So, when, you guys need to understand, it's a simple thing in development. One plus one must make two. In all over the world, in the last 15 years, property value went up. The only place in the world, the last 15 years, property down, went down value in the West Side. The value of the property is about $100,000 to $80,000 a lot. Nobody will be able to develop any commercial, because you will not get construction loan. And I'm okay with it if you guys put this community down. And I'm okay with it if you guys put this community down because you already created the ghetto by building the freeway, and then by closing F Street, and now by reducing the height. So I will give the community what they ask for, seven stories.
So I'm just gonna make a suggestion, I'm gonna make a suggestion.
Madam Chair, sorry.
Why don't, yeah, Ms. Cato, hold on a second. This is my suggestion for you guys.
Yes.
Why don't you, as a team, go out and discuss all your options? You sort of have a sense of where, you know, you, you understand the process, what we do here, and then what we do at city council. Why don't you take a minute to go outside, talk about, and we've got a couple of other items to do, so I'm.
I'm sorry, I'm, if the, on, on council, if the own people from that district, which is, I'm sorry, you Mr. Mansfor, do not want to help the community, I'm more than, I'm more than help with you. You don't care about the community benefit, I understand.
Madam Chair, we'll take the five minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cato. Okay, with that, we'll bring you guys back in in a minute, and we're gonna move to director's business. We're gonna go to item 37, which is Abeyance 25-0088 TXT1. Applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request to amend LVMC 19.04 regarding complete street standards and to provide for other related matters, staff recommends approval. May we have the report on this item, please?
Hello, Chair. This is Josh Edelman with Public Works, I have, I have the staff report here.
Hi, thank you, sorry, Josh.
That's okay. The, so the text amendment is just reflecting some original, or, the text amendment is to make several clarifications in the code regarding administrative deferrals, private utility separations, street cross-sections, arcades, and mapping. Clarifies that the Director of Public Works has complete discretion as to which improvements may be deferred through the administrative deferral process, updates roadway cross-sections to match how the cross-sections have been used in practice since UDC adoption in 2011, and address other related matters. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much. This item is noticed for public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak about this proposed text amendment, as item 37? Okay, seeing none, I will close public hearing. I will pass it to the commission. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners on item 37? Nope? All right, then, can I get a motion on this item, vice chair?
Yes, Chairwoman. I called Public Works earlier, and I went through this, and I completely understand it now, and I'm all, I'm ready to make a motion. Item number 37, 25-0088 TXT1, moved to approve.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor to approve. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Thank you, please post. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, that'll be moving on to city council in ordinance form.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number 38, 25-0184-DIR1. Applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request to appoint a member of the planning commission to the Downtown Design Review Committee from the following list of planning commissioners, Lou DeSalvio, sorry, Louis DeSalvio, Jeffrey Rogan, Trinity Schlotman, Serena Kasama, Stephen Munford, and Jennifer Taylor.
Madam Chair, the design, Downtown Design Review Committee consists of seven members, two of which are members of the planning commission. Currently, there is one vacancy, and that item has been agendized for the commission to nominate and vote on this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Lou DeSalvio for the DDRRC.
I'll accept that nomination.
Okay, there is a nomination on the floor, if everybody wants to cast their votes. Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Okay, great, please post. And that motion and nomination carries. Item 39.
Madam Chair, that is final action, you're a PC.
Thank you, I'm just dying to cut you off, Fred, sorry about that. Okay, item 39, 25-0196 TXT1. Applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request to amend LVMC 19.12 regarding residential tiny house park and to provide for other related matters, staff recommends approval. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is mine. Fred Solis for the record. Madam Chair, in 2024, the city adopted a tiny home ordinance, which updated the code and brought the city into compliance with the changes made by 2021 and 2023 sessions of the Nevada Legislature. As currently written, the residential tiny home park use allows for renting of tiny homes, but only if they are located on their own individual lot in the RMH, which is the mobile home manufacturer, home zoning district. The proposed amendment will allow for a group of individual tiny homes, whether stick-built or manufactured, on a single lot for the multi-family, within the multifamily residential zoning districts of R3, which is medium-density residential, or R4, which is high-density residential. All residential tiny home park development will be subject to the applicable R3 or R4 development standards outlined in 1906 and 1908, and a site development plan review will be required to be heard at public hearing. The proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in the event a developer wishes to pursue this type of product on multifamily zone lots. Staff recommends the approval of the request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is, this item has been noted for public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to be heard on this proposed amendment? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on item 39. Are there any members of the commission who have questions or comments on this item? Nope? Okay, fantastic. Then, Vice Chair Schlotman, can you make a motion?
Yes, and I just wanted to tell Mr. Solis, I appreciate all the time he spent going through this text amendment with me earlier, and educate me on the difference between tiny homes and multifamily, and minimum size houses, and everything else. So thank you for your time earlier today. On item number 39, 25-0196 TXT1, moved to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you very much.
For a report?
Thank you very much, Commissioner Schlotman, there's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Rogan?
Aye.
Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Okay, please post. And that motion carries, thank you, Mr. Solis.
And Madam Chair, that'll be forwarded to city council in ordinance form.
Okay, thank you. All right, it looks like items 30 and 31 are back in. If you guys would like to come to the podium?
Madam Chair? Madam Chair? Hold on one second. Before he makes his statement, can I make one, please, before he says what he's about to say? Understand, the stuff that we talked about is just to be prepared for city council, okay? Hold on. Just hold on, all right? I got the floor, right? It's to be prepared, because like I told you in the beginning, I support this conceptual idea. City council's gonna beat it up. It goes from here, we're recommending board, we're land use, right? I wanna see it because I believe that it's something that will actually spike development, and we're fine. So I'm, I'm 100% behind it, no matter how my fellow council people vote. Because at the end of the day, we are a recommending board, and city council could flip what we do. Whether we send it with approval, or we send it with denial, they have the last bite at the apple. I'm personally going to vote in favor of it, okay? But I'm just telling you, this stuff that you brought needs to be tightened up for city council, or it's just not gonna cut the mustard. But I'm here for land use, and I told you that in the beginning. I believe this project. I pray to God that it actually comes to fruition, right? But I just want that on record. So before you make a statement that you shouldn't be making if you didn't really think it through because you're angry, I seen you on the news, I seen how you acted there, and you're starting to act that way here. So I would suggest that you just take a step back. Let the people spoke. You had more support here than you had denial today. Hear from the fellow commissioners, all of them, if they, I haven't heard from Commissioner Rogan, I heard from Commissioner Kasama yet, I haven't heard from any of them. I would love to hear their opinion before you make a statement you just might not like to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogan, Commissioner Kasama, did you want to provide some comments or questions on these items?
Thank you, Chair. I, I just wanna kind of bring it back to what you said, Chair, which is that we're just here for land use, and we're just evaluating this project based upon the code that was adopted by city council. And frankly, it just doesn't meet the code. So there really is no question in my mind that, that this is a motion for denial, which I would support. And if city council wants to reevaluate this area and provide for taller buildings and casinos like what's been proposed, then that's their prerogative. But at this point, we're stuck with the code, and so I can't support this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogan. I'm not sure if Commissioner Kasama is still on.
Hi, I'm Chair, I'm just, Chair Rogan.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments? Commissioner Munford, anything you wanna say to wrap up?
Like I said before, in terms of the project, there's nothing I have against the project. Just like everybody was stating, it's the code. We're, we don't, that's, that's our job. And to determine whether this passes the mustard in terms of the 100 plan and all the things that planning has suggested with us. Now, your job is, is if, if this doesn't work out, you're still gonna have a shot with the city council. Your job from here on out is make sure that when you get before city council, you know, like I said, and, you know, I, I said, you know, I've been a part of that community for a long time. Nobody has to tell me the history of that community. I've seen it, I've seen, you know, I've seen all kinds of things happen in that community.
But not development?
And, well, like I said, and that, and again, that's, that goes back to, whether it's you or anybody, that development hasn't happened with a lot of people.
And Solis?
That's, that development hasn't happened with a lot of people. Not saying that you're not gonna execute, that's not my job. But what I'm saying is, you, when you go before city council, you're gonna have a shot to go ahead and tell them, you know, you know, lay everything out, and hopefully, for, you know, for you, you know, they do approve. But like I said, I don't have anything against the project. But what I do have, a job here like everybody else is, is what, what is the code that we're looking at? What is the land use? What is the best land use, you know, for that site? In terms of what, what planning and different people on, on the city side is, is the information that we're getting.
Madam Chair, through you. I understand what you're saying, Commissioner. I have served 12 years as planning commissioner in the city of North Las Vegas, four of which I was chair, and two of which I was vice chair. I do understand land use, I do understand the job that you have as a body, and I do understand staff always, always provide conditions, if it's the desire of the body to approve the project. So it's not directed at anyone, but I know there is leeway in any project, and I've seen it here tonight, where projects have been referred for denial, but there are conditions for approval. We have condition of approval for six items, 31 from A, from 30, A through E, and for 31, from A through D. We have conditions for all of them. So there is leeway as the, this body, when it comes to land use, having sat in that position, but in another jurisdiction. So I just wanted to bring that, but I wanna say thank you for bringing some of the things to our attention that we need to tighten up. And we will tighten up, because you didn't have to share it with us. You didn't have to give us those nuggets. So we will go back and we'll tighten up on those things. But I just wanted to say that part, because I know there are conditions.
And you met with me.
Thank you.
As well as Mr. DeSalvio. And I told you some things that might help you.
Yes, thank you.
Why not approve it with those condition met? Why to deny, that's my question.
Like I said, in, in terms of denial, I.
I understand you denied, which I knew before I even came here, that you will be denied. I want you to know, before you came here, I knew you guys going to deny. But I'm questioning, why would not approve the condition?
Respectfully, sir, I'm not gonna go over that again. We're just gonna, like I said, I, I motioned that we go ahead and move forward with a vote.
We'll move forward with the motion, thank you.
And like I said, the next step, the next step is gonna be, you know, will be city council.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask one question? What you expect me to do if it's denied with city council because we have to have 200 hotel room, and it's impossible? Then what you expect me to do? Did you guys thought on the circumstances?
That's, that's, that's not our.
They can't answer it.
Yeah, we can't, we, we don't have anything to do with that, in terms of city council's decision.
The 200 hotel room with casino, you reduce the height without asking the owner of a property, and you don't have nothing to tell me about it?
No.
There's nothing that this body can do. Move them for a motion, please, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Munford, if you wanna make a motion, just remember, we need to make them, item 30 and item 31, separate motions.
Thank you.
All right. So I, I'd like to make a motion. I like, for, I'd like to make a motion for nonapproval upon the condition, or the, 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 the planning, the planning department recommendations for item, for item 31. And.
For item 30.
I'm sorry, for item 30, and then I guess we'll do 31 next.
Yes.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor for denial on item 30. Please, sorry?
A through F.
A through F.
And 31.
Nope. Just 30. So that's the motion on the floor, denial in, on item 38 through F. Please cast your votes. And a motion, and a yes is to support denial. Commissioner Rogan? Is that a yea?
Yea.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Okay. All right, please post. All right, and that motion does carry. And then Commissioner Munford, if you'd.
Madam, Madam Chair, that item will be going to city council on June 18th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Solis. Okay, Commissioner Munford, if you'd like to make your motion on item 31.
All right, I'd like to make a motion on item 31 for denial. 25-0111. I, I'm sorry, items A through D.
Okay, thank you very much. There is a motion on the floor, a yes vote is for denial. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Rogan?
Yea.
Commissioner Kasama?
Aye.
Thank you, please post. And that motion carries.
And Madam Chair, that item will be going to city council on June 18th, 2025.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you so much.
Okay, and then finally, we have item 40, which is citizens' participation. This is public comment during this portion of the agenda, and it must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time, any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Anybody? Seeing none, we'll close item 40, and this planning committee, yes? No, go ahead. Oh, meeting's adjourned, thank you, sure.